Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Thank you for joining us virtually and for our meeting today. Today's date is January 11, 2022, and this meeting is hereby called to order. And at this time, I'll ask the clerk if she would please call the roll and establish a forum.
Good morning, Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.net. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 14 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14.
Thank you. And at this time, I'm going to invite everyone who's able to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
By the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Well, welcome to 2022, everyone. I know we have quite a hefty meeting today, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep my comments short, but I just wanted to say a couple of words. I guess this is my last day as the Chairman of the Board, and I want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity. I especially want to call out Ann Edwards. Remember when we started our year in 20, you know, early 2021, we were in lockdown, and I think it was on our first meeting day that we actually got news by 11:30 that we were gonna open up a little bit. And I think we've made progress in 2021. I know it's been a challenging year, but I want to thank the entire staff at the Sacramento County for, I guess, not just all of your extra efforts and your hard work and your commitment, but during uncertain times, it can make things even more stressful. And thank you for your patience with all of us. I want to thank you, Ann Edwards, for our county executive, for all of your help this year and your support of me and all of us on the board. You've done an amazing job, and your reputation precedes you. And not just with us, but in the, in the business and in the community. I'm hearing all kinds of good things, and I just want you to know we're, I'm really excited that you're our county executive and appreciate all your hard work. And to our county council, who has, this has been a challenging year, and I know we've had, you know, there's been a lot of issues that came before us, and I want to thank you, Lisa, for always being there to, you know, guide us through and help us. To Florence Evans, who is our Board Clerk, and to all of the Board Clerks, I want to say thank you so much for, you know, juggling the phones, all of the extra work, the tensions that are associated with your work. And on top of that, so many long days and nights, and I know over time, trying to make preparations for added duties that came along as a result of COVID and other things. And so we just want you all to know that you're the best and that we really appreciate everything you do. And I want to call out the county executive staff. I won't name everyone, but I just want to say to all of you who head up the departments and the support team behind you, you do so much all the time to help us, inform us, and give us the information we need to make what we feel is the best decision at the moment in representing our constituents and many times make us look good because you're so smart and you have that background information that we don't necessarily have. So I want to thank all of you for your support during the year to all of us. And lastly, or not lastly, I also want to thank the Board. The job is, you know, the way I perceive the job as Chair is, you know, we're all here to make tough decisions, but the Chair is here to ensure that the meetings move along and that we ensure decorum and respect and that, you know, we hopefully support an environment that is positive as we're making those tough decisions. And all of you have helped me so much, and even in those moments when I got, I get distracted, I might be a little bit, you know, ADHD. I don't know. I, sometimes these long meetings, you don't pick up on every little moment, and it was the Board that gave me those little nudges, and I really appreciate all your help during the year, helping me do it better. And then I want to lastly say a special thank you to the community and the, those who came out all year, who have engaged civically and been there to make public comments and to help us, inform us in what's important to you, that it's helpful and it makes a big difference in, it helps us to know. Frankly, you know, gives us an idea of what you're thinking and how we can better represent you. So thank you for being involved. And so at this time, that's pretty much it. Thank you, everyone. I'm excited to hand, I'm gonna get to pass the baton to Supervisor, I'm assuming, well, we're gonna vote on that next, I guess. But before we do anything else, I'm gonna go ahead and read the Chair's announcement, and we'll get, move on to our next item. And so, "The Board of Supervisors encourages public participation during the meeting in compliance with the directives of the County State and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. This meeting is broadcast live and closed to in-person attendance. Meeting procedures are subject to change based on the recommended public health and safety guidelines. To make public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in the queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda and/or watch the meeting to follow along and determine when is the best time to call and be placed in the queue to make your public comment. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. I will ask the clerk to transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each Agenda Item Q will remain open until the public comment period is closed or that's for that specific item. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per Agenda Item or Off-Agenda Matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures and avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. If you need to, if you need an accommodation pursuant to America's With Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk's staff or assistants or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.net. You may send written comments by email or to boardclerk@saccounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed into the record. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures." And at this time, I would like to ask our clerk if she could read item number 51 into the record.
Yes. So we are taking things out of order and jumping to item 51, which is the election of the 2022 Chairperson and Vice Chairperson of the Board of Supervisors.
I'm Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Serna.
First of all, Happy New Year, and thanks for your opening comments. Appreciate it that. I'd like to nominate Supervisor Natoli to be our 2022 Chairperson.
Thank you, and I think that was Supervisor Desmond seconding.
Yes.
And I'll take a roll call vote. Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
I gotta, I gotta say that's somewhat historic. I think that's gonna be the last time any of us get to nominate Mr. Natoli for his leadership of this Board, but it's certainly an honor to do so today.
Thank you, Phil. I'd like to then nominate Supervisor Desmond as our Vice Chair. Chair.
Thank you, and I'll second that. And roll call vote, please.
Yes, Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. And so with that, I believe it is appropriate to turn the meeting over to our new Chairman of the Board, Supervisor Don Natoli.
We don't get cookies or anything?
I didn't bring any.
Virtual cookies.
Virtual cookies. Well, thank you, Chair Frost. And I wanted to say thank you to my colleagues first for the opportunity to serve this Board in the capacity as Chair, and I look forward to the year to come. And this kind of ceremonious passing of the gavel is different than any time it's ever been, probably to Mr. Serna's point about history. I think even throughout the, nearly the entirety of the pandemic, we've met as a Board, at least at the dais, and obviously with all the various mix and match of how we were to able accommodate both staff and public to our meetings. But this virtual meeting that we have today is one where, obviously, we hope, I think, in a short amount of time, we'll back into session in the chambers. I know just prior to our holiday break, we were, you know, again, once again, folks were joining us in chambers. And I think, again, that forum is an important one, and I know that Flo looks pretty lonely down there by herself today, but we all hope to be back there shortly. Before I make a couple of comments, I did want to take this opportunity, as is tradition, but certainly to, I think, build on the comments that our Chair made to each of us and to county staff to echo what Supervisor Serna said, to echo our thanks to Supervisor Frost for her year as Chair. We've all had the opportunity, I think, with the exception of Supervisor Desmond, who will get his chance in the saddle next year, to serve in that capacity as Chairperson of the Board of Supervisors. And it's one that, as she noted, certainly there's the conduct of the meeting itself, and it's, you know, and even with the very capable assistance of the clerk's office, it still falls to the realm of the Chair to oversee the conduct of the meetings. I want to thank you, Sue, for, Supervisor Frost, for your leadership and work this past year and for helping us get through 2021, and I think 2022 certainly holds a lot of promise for what lies ahead, and hopefully put the pandemic in the rearview mirror as we work for recovery and restoration, and we've got a lot of items on today's agenda to, you know, I think, assist in some of those initiatives and efforts. But it is appropriate, and I want to extend thanks, and we as a Board have, as is tradition, recognize a charity of your choice. Yeah, prepared, hopefully seen, or know, a contribution to the Carmichael. Yeah, Heart of Orangeville and, you know, the Heart of Orangeville and Fair Oaks, a $200 contribution in your name to help an organization that, obviously, you've been very supportive of and one that we recognize there are branches throughout the county that do good work in our community, helping the less fortunate. And so on behalf of my colleagues, present this in your name, and the money's been wired there already, as I understand it. I don't, I don't know how to do PayPal, but somebody did that, help us with that. So money should be on deposit, and we'll go to a good effort. And we'll have a copy of this from your office, so you can retain it.
Thank you.
Also, as tradition to have it, and we'll have to get these delivered out to you, we have some flowers to, again, recognize, hopefully brighten your day, and make sure we get to you right away, too. And again, offer our thanks for your, for your work throughout the year, and, you know, certainly wish you well in the year to come, all of us. And I don't know if you want to make any comments, Sue, I had a couple of comments, but in the end, you want to respond.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your generous contribution. I, the hearts are special to me. I was, I've been a volunteer. I was one of the people who helped start up the Citrus Heights Heart, and then I was there when Folsom began theirs to support them, and also the Sacramento, North Sacramento Heart. And now Orangeville, this year, decided to open a heart, and on the 19th, I believe they're having their first winter shelter. And so it's, it's really, it means a lot that you, that's, it means a lot. It's a leg up for them, and I want to thank all of you for your generosity. It's much appreciated.
Good. Well, thanks again. We wish we were here in person to present that, but we'll make sure the floral gift gets out to you. And again, the money should already be in the hands of Heart, and we know it'll do good work, and thanks for your support of those organizations. I don't know, the Board members, want to make any comments before I go on? Okay. So just would note, as we move into the agenda, and we do have a full agenda, that I really look forward to the year ahead, and I trust my colleagues do as well. And for all the challenges that we will confront in any given period of time, there's a lot of, as I said, a lot of promise, and there's a lot of blessings in this community in many different ways, and certainly we as representatives of people in this county are given a tremendous opportunity to weigh in and to provide guidance and leadership, you know, a whole host of different program and service areas. And we're certainly very blessed with, you know, talented staff and personnel, certainly, and, and top leadership, but folks up and down the ranks of the county workforce, with nearly 12,000 people any given day, performing a host of essential services, and certainly many things that, you know, guide this community forward. It's been challenging, and it will continue to be challenging, it sounds like, at least for the next few weeks, but we hope to see that, that the course of this year, we are able to weigh in on matters that, both big and small, that make a difference in this community. And I'm really looking forward to this, this being my final year on this Board, to be able to serve as your Chair, and I look forward to working with each of my colleagues and certainly the community as a whole, and hopefully, again, facilitating, moving forward on many positive fronts and helping us to, you know, work together to, you know, have, continue to maintain and build a strong community with a quality of life that we can all enjoy and be proud of. And, and again, I have confidence in my colleagues on this Board and that will spend the time, not only in, obviously, this virtual environment, but in the chambers, but working together to, you know, make for a strong county and to do the things that we believe are in the best interest of the people that we represent. So again, it's an honor to serve. I look forward to it. And I said this to Ann the other day, when I understood we were gonna be in this virtual environment. I'm hopeful, and that the way we start out this year in the virtual environment will not be the way we end when it comes December 2022, that we'll be back in chambers, and we can have folks with us throughout the course of the year. And that community engagement is very important, both in our Board meeting setting, but certainly in the, in the work that each of us does and collectively that we do as a county and a Board of Supervisors for this great county. So with that, I don't know, Vice Chair, do you have any comments you wanted to make? If not, or any colleague member of the Board, I certainly wouldn't allow you to weigh in, otherwise we'll move right into the agenda, so.
Very briefly, I appreciate the support, supporting me to be Vice Chair, and I'll be soaking it all in this year, Supervisor Natoli, to take your lead and learn from you, as I did during my first year, of course. And I couldn't agree with you more that I certainly hope that, I'm glad we have the ability to do this safely, obviously carry on these meetings, but I too hope we can get back to in-person shortly because I think there's a, there's a huge value in us being together and providing an in-person opportunity for the public. And I frankly, you know, miss the, you enjoy the, you know, there's a sense of camaraderie and collegiality that we have when we're in person, and, you know, I enjoy seeing you all in person. So happy we're here now, but I look forward to seeing you again in person in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rich. Phil, Patrick, anything you want to add?
I just, I just wanted to make the observation that we've been enduring the consequence of the COVID pandemic so long now that our now esteemed Vice Chair Supervisor Desmond hasn't even had the opportunity yet, as a seated member of this Board, to experience a fully open chambers with, you know, what perhaps we took for granted some time ago. But I couldn't agree more with Chair Natoli about, I think, a shared objective or interest by, I think, all of us on the Board and staff to hopefully see by the end of this calendar year a very different circumstance in terms of direct public participation that makes it, I think, such a better governing environment when you have people in person that come and testify and present. So just wanted to share those thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. Patrick, anything? Okay, again, thank you all, and we'll get on with the business at hand here in January of 2022. So with that, Flo, I'll turn to you then for our consent calendar, and you'll call any matters out that we need to either, either pass on and/or have additional information, so Flo.
Thank you, Chairperson Natoli. I do have quite a few notes. So for your consent matters, you have items 1 through 50, and then you also have an off-agenda item. This is a notification of emergency contract with Tiker Construction for the repair of a 54-inch pipe located at the Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant, and approve an emergency construction contract for agency engineer above $100,000. So first, I need a motion to determine necessity to hear the matter, and then we'll need a second motion to approve the Board item.
Okay, with that, then, and just before you take any motions. So for folks that want to weigh in on any matters, including this one, there is a call-in number that's on the agenda. I wanted to make sure that was understood, though, because of this, the virtual environment here today, and that's the 875-2500 number. So if you call in and wish to address any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, we have operators standing by that will assist with making sure that folks are in the queue appropriately and that we call upon you as we bring the items forward. So we are, again, doing this by call-in today, again, 875-2500 is the number, and we do have folks to assist you with that. So first item is the off-agenda item, and we need a motion necessity to hear, which requires a four-fifth. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Again, by Frost.
Okay, so it's moved by, certainly second by Frost, and to, for the necessity to hear. If there's no other comments on that, then I'll call for voice vote. Please call the roll. I, do we have to call roll each of these items?
We do, Supervisor Natoli.
All right.
Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond. Serna.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I don't mean to interrupt, but just a point of order. You may have already addressed this, or perhaps the clerk did, and I missed it, but would you prefer us to use the raise-hand function to, to comment so that you, as Chair, can maybe keep, keep track of who's chiming in and what point?
Sure, that'll be helpful. You can do it either way. If you want to jump right in, that's fine. But yeah, the raised hand, Flo, you have to monitor that, otherwise we'll have our hands up all over the place. So, but I'll watch for the hands, and you can maybe keep them in the order. But again, and if I overlooked that, or you feel like you're not getting a chance to weigh in, just jump in. I encourage that of each of you, please do, and likewise, county executive, but I don't have a button for that either, so, or Lisa Travis, our county council. So, okay, good. Thanks, Phil, for that.
Supervisor Natoli, Board members, we will try to assist. I don't have access to do it either from my screen, but I do have Metro Cable and also all of the clerk of the Board staff who are working in the background and just making all of this go, making everyone look good. So they, I hope that they can hear me, and we'll make sure that we work to get this organized for you.
Okay, all right. And again, if we don't have that function, we'll just, you know, I'll pause during each item and try to watch for folks, and nobody on this Board is shy. I understand that either, so we won't stifle any voices. I'm confident of that. Okay, very good. Okay, we have the item off at the end, and you read it in the record. That is an emergency contract for repair at the Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant. So do we have any public comments on this item, man?
We do have one person on the line for an off-agenda matter. I'm not certain if it is particularly related to this. I doubt it because we didn't announce it until then, and the phone line is still open. And so as of right now, I don't have any new callers.
Okay. Then running a little bit of risk here, but assuming that the off-agenda call is not related to this, we'll go ahead and take this matter up. So any questions of staff or anything? Ann, you wanted to add on this? Okay, if not, then a motion will be ordered.
I'll move approval. Desmond?
Second, Frost.
Okay, moved by Desmond, second by Frost to approve the matters outlined, emergency contract for repair of the primary water line at the Surface Water Treatment Plant, Vineyard Surface Water Treatment Plant. Okay, if there's nothing further to know for the comments, then we'll call for a Board vote. Ann, sorry?
Yes, Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, so I do have a few other announcements. For item 18, you are adopting an ordinance amending sections 22.05.035 and 22.20.060 of Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code relating to Senate Bill 9 requirements to allow two primary dwellings on one parcel, to provide for ministerial processing of two-lot tentative parcel maps, and to address expiration of map approvals. You waived reading on this item on December 21. For item 19, you're adopting an ordinance. This is related to the Housing Trust Fund Fee Update, amending chapters, excuse me, Chapter 16.89 of the Sacramento County Code to update the fees on non-residential construction to fund very low-income housing. And you waive reading on this, I believe, either on December 14. I'm not sure from the way that it's agendized, and my apology on that. For item 24, this is a contract for the Hazel Avenue Improvement Project, Phase 3 Sunset Avenue, Madison Avenue, approving the change order number 6, a not-to-exceed increase of $250,000 and no additional working days. I want to put on the record that we are correcting the title, that this resides in Supervisory District Number 3 for Supervisor Desmond. We also have a title correction on item number 28. This is a contract for the NARS 2020 Storm Drain and Roadway Project, final contract acceptance. The department that this resides with is Waste Management. And then I do believe that there may be, that Supervisor Natoli might be pulling item number 47, and I'll let you direct me when you're ready for that item.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
That concludes my notes.
Very good. Okay, so let's go to Board members first. Any items you wish to pull from the consent calendar or comment on? Yeah, Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Chair Natoli. I have a comment on a couple of items here. The first would be item 2.
Okay, so for item number 2, this is the response to the November 5, 2021 investigative Sacramento County grand jury report titled "Del Paso Manor Water District Flooded With Public Safety Dangers."
Great, thank you, thank you, Flo and Chair Natoli. I just want to comment briefly on this. I appreciate county council looking at this, and obviously, we don't have a large role here. I just wanted to let my fellow Board members know that LAFCO has been, has been talking about this issue and recently formed a two-by-two. and recently formed a two-by-two, um, uh, with the Del Paso Manor Water District Board and the LAFCO Commissioners. I'm, I'm one of the commissioners from LAFCO. Del Paso Manor Water District resides within District 3. And so one of the purposes of this two-by-two is to meet regularly with the, the, the board at the district and, and make sure they are mapping out a plan that will correct some of the deficiencies that were identified by the grand jury. So just want to let you know that, and also want to thank County Council for the information you provided in response to some of my questions about the county's role and the state's role. So, um, those are the comments I had on that one.
Thanks, thank you, Rich.
Oh, sorry.
I was just, any other comments or questions on that item? Why we called it? Good, thanks for your leadership and work on it.
Thank you, and then I had a, just a brief comment on, um, item 18.
Item 18, let me go to that item. Item 18, uh, is to adopt the ordinance, um, amending sections 22 dot zero five dot zero three five and 22 dot 20 dot zero 60 of Title 22 of the Sacramento County Code relating to Senate Bill 9 requirements to allow two primary dwellings on one parcel, to provide for ministerial processing of two lot tentative parcel maps, and to address expiration of map approvals.
Thank you, uh, Flo. And on this one, really quick, I know we all, uh, approved this, uh, in December. And part of the discussion, though, during that approval was that we had to do some of the outreach that we would typically do ahead of time. We're doing it after the fact because we, we, we needed to move forward with this. I just, I know that, uh, Mike Penrose is on and, and, and I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of, of that outreach, still being, I think, very, very important at the, at the local level, at our CPACs and, and other organizations, to make sure the public is, is educated about the impact this is going to have, um, in the unincorporated community. So just wanted to make sure that doesn't get lost in the, you know, kind of implementation process.
We will make sure it does not get lost. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. And then finally, I just had a, a, a comment on item 30.
On item 30, okay. Item 30 is to approve the summary vacation of portions of the right-of-way and reserve of the underlying public utility easement located at 7997 California Avenue in the Fair Oaks community. The environmental determination is a categorical exemption.
Thank you, Flo. And finally, on this one, um, our, Anne, you and I had a brief conversation about it yesterday. This is, the Fair Oaks Recreation and Park District is doing a very, very large, um, project in, in the Village of Fair Oaks. That's going to have, uh, it's going to be really transformational in that community. Um, and there, there, I appreciate staff's efforts on this item and, and, and a lot of their other efforts, um, working with the park district. Um, I, I know that a lot of issues will come up over time in terms of, of this project, just because of its size and scope. And I just would, would request that the county, the departments, um, maybe explore, possibly maybe having a working group, but certainly maintaining open communications with the Fair Oaks Recreation and Park District to make sure this project keeps moving forward. Um, and there aren't any, any big surprises. I, I would just really appreciate that. Just wanted to, uh, throw that out there and make that request. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Rich. All right, uh, thank you Supervisor Desmond, and, um, Patrick, my colleague. I just wanted to say that I echo those comments on item 18, that the need to have that outreach and these, again, just the communication we received from one of the residents of the county, uh, and how strongly they felt about, you know, the state law that we're having to implement. And I just think that that outreach is going to be key to helping to build some understanding, as much as it's giving frustration potentially around implementation of that. So, but, uh, thanks for comments, Supervisor Desmond. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, item 45, please?
Item 45. Item 45 is the authorization to participate in the No Place Like Home program for the On Broadway project.
Great, uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to make a, a brief comment. I think as we all can appreciate and have witnessed for ourselves in recent weeks and months, the, um, the nature of homelessness, uh, in, you know, every corner of the, the county. But I would say especially, uh, along some of the corridors, uh, in the downtown Sacramento area have really become, uh, very, very disturbing, quite frankly. When you drive down Eastbound on X Street, um, uh, at the end of X Street near Alhambra. Um, and I know the city of Sacramento, uh, is actively pursuing, uh, a whole host of, um, interventions, including, uh, specific sites for, uh, for folks to receive services and acquire at least some, uh, temporary respite and shelter. Um, I just wanted to comment on this item, noting its geography, noting the fact that this is, um, a, uh, No Place Like Home, uh, program that will, uh, spawn, uh, permanent support of housing, uh, on Broadway. And I know that, uh, participation in the program means that, uh, there are very, uh, specific, uh, state, um, guidelines for that participation in terms of, uh, the activities, um, onsite and, uh, who it will serve. But to the extent that, uh, we can, uh, perhaps focus some of the services and, uh, opportunities associated with the site, in somewhat close proximity to where we're seeing some of the most distressed, uh, parts of the homeless circumstance in downtown Sacramento, um, I think we should have an eye towards that. So I just wanted to offer that, uh, to the likes of Bruce, um, and certainly, uh, LaShelle and her staff at, uh, SHRA. Um, this is, uh, obviously a very important component, part of our continuum and, uh, very supportive. But I feel like I would have been, uh, remiss if, if not to kind of point out, uh, some of the geographical, geographical connection between where this is being proposed and where we're seeing, uh, some of the worst, um, uh, consequence of, uh, the plight of homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Comments by?
I would just say, thank you Supervisor. We'll follow up as you indicated. Uh, I think there is a real opportunity here. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Bruce.
All right, can Phil, anything else? All right. Other members of the board, any items, uh, you wish to call out from the, uh, consent calendar, otherwise we're, uh, public comment.
Um, I'm sorry, Chairperson Natoli, uh, I, I think your mic is going in and out, but I believe you asked me if there's public comments?
Oh, I just said, I asked the resident board members. I just see other board members coming forward, so yeah, we'll go to public comments then.
Okay, sorry, I was trying to read your lips.
Yeah.
We do have public comments, uh, for, right now, for our consent matters, items one through 50. We have a couple of public comments for item seven. I'll go ahead and read that item into the record and ask, uh, and if you don't mind, I'm just going to shorten this title. It's quite a, a long, um, title. It's about half of a page. So, um, this is to authorize the expenditure of up to 11.4 million in funding from the American Rescue Plan of 2021 for the purpose of providing premium pay to, uh, eligible essential workers employed by the county. And there is, um, there are a host of various different, um, organizations here listed, um, and employees that are affected. Please refer to item number seven if you'd like to see all of that, uh, detail. And I'll ask staff to go ahead and transfer the first caller, please.
And, Madam Clerk, as you do that, so is, is there a timer so that speakers, if they're watching in real time? I know we asked them to turn their, um, you know, background, uh, down, but, um, is there a way that we can?
We'll, we'll make sure that, um, I don't know that it's implemented right at this moment, but we'll get it going so that it runs in the background. And I will, um, try and help with that and let you know when they're, uh, at their three minutes.
Right.
Yes, okay. Hi caller.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Hi caller, uh, you have three minutes to make your public comment, and I'll help you when you get close to your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Hi, my name's Ted Samara. I'm the Director, Director of United Public Employees.
Hi Ted.
For what it's worth, Supervisor Natoli, Happy New Year to you and your fellow board members.
Thank you, and same to you.
I, 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 I hope that you maybe, uh, extend my time just by a couple more minutes, as I represent 3,800 members, and we didn't do a concerted effort to filibuster this item here today. But it raises concerns in regards to what is being presented to the board here in this fashion. The majority of these bargaining units make over $102,000, and so they wouldn't qualify for any ARPA money. They, most, most of those are going to get the 40 hours administrative time off. For the last 25 days, I've counted, Sacramento County has over, has had over 120 positive cases of COVID. These are employees working for the county of Sacramento. When we went to bargaining back of, in last year, in July of last year, we were bargaining over a number of 300 million that you're going to receive in ARPA relief. Now that number has been cut in half for us to bargain with, to which is going to equate to basically 36 cents an hour, per hour every employee has worked, uh, uh, in the county of Sacramento for the last two years. This is ridiculous. It's insulting. I've spoken to those that had courage to meet with me one-on-one about this, to voice my concerns on this, and for those other board of supervisors that didn't wish to meet with me, let it rest upon your shoulders. That active cases, you, you, you're all secluded in your offices or at home. Well, you have county employees in bureaus, at work sites, where there's positive cases, outbreaks, in one bureau in DHA, there's been over 13 cases of positive cases of COVID in one bureau in the last week. And what you're offering here, it is basically tell them, eat crumbs. So it's the typical Sacramento County institutionalize on how they want to treat their employees, and nothing has changed. There's no time for these folks to take off. They can't take off because they utilize all their time off. They still have to pay their bills. What we proposed yesterday for our, one of our bargaining units is $3,000, 1,500 now, 1,500 when you get the other portion. So that in good faith, we can meet our, what we agreed to in, in July of last year, where we extended this contract. What you're offering them, i- i- it's insulting. They can't pay their bills. They cannot, you, they're the ones that are making each one, each five of you look good within your own district by continuing to provide services and coming into work to do so. But what are you doing in return? We understand that you don't have the, the full 300 million now.
Mister Samara, you are, uh, beyond your three minutes at this point.
Hence, hence why we proposed 1,500, yeah.
I, I just, Ted's moment, so Chair would, uh, would allow two more minutes for Ted to conclude his comments, so continue, Ted.
I, I appreciate that, thank you. What we propose is 1,500 now, 1,500 when you get the, the remaining 150 million next year. We believe that is reasonable. Is it, is it what they deserve? Probably not. They deserve a whole lot more. But we understand that Sacramento County is a big county, and you have a lot of responsibilities, not just to your county employees, but to the county at large. But it shouldn't be lost, that responsibility you have for your employees. Appreciate them, recognize them. They are heroes. From the person that sits at the front desk, that greets customers, to those that are going actually out in the field. They're all heroes because they're making this county functionable through this pandemic. I pray that you all do the right thing. There's supposed to be changes coming. You hired a county exec to bring changes. You hired a director of DPS to bring changes. But from what we see, looking in, there's no changes, just different faces. So it's incumbent upon you all to appreciate your employees. The majority of these that you're going to, uh, accept today and give to, it's coming out of your general fund because they meet, make over the $102,000 threshold that's outlined within the Department of Treasury's guidelines. So that's coming out of your general fund. It's not even coming out of ARPA money. So my question, and you have hundreds of vacant positions within, uh, those classifications that would receive ARPA money. And so where's that money going to go to? It's misleading. So the 8%, you're really not allocating 8% of the first $150 million towards employees. It's less than that because of those vacant positions. So once again, I pray that you all make the right decision. You can do it. You can tell the county exec to accept this.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ted. Uh, Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair Natoli. Um, to the county executive, the action taken here today does not preclude us from revisiting this, and I don't want to negotiate at the diaphragm, but, um, this does not preclude us from revisiting this when we, because we still don't know exactly when we're going to get more money from ARPA, and we don't know with a 100% degree of certainty how much we're going to get. But this doesn't preclude us from revisiting this subject in the future, does it?
It does not, and, um, as Mr. Samara indicated, we are still in discussions with UPE.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Serna, thanks, buddy.
But their proposal is to end negotiations. Their proposal is to end discussions on this. That is the county's proposal. That if we signed off today off the 1,500, it would end negotiations.
That's actually inaccurate. This would end negotiations with these particular bargaining units.
But for our, ours and for ours, that's what it says here. It says it for them too. It's got, some of them got the me-too clause.
Chairperson Natoli, I do want to advise that we have another person on hold waiting to make their public comment.
Yeah, yeah, Ted, you know, I appreciate Ted was still aligning, he's concluded his comments, and I, I understand the last point he's made as well. So let me go to Supervisor, I don't know if Anne, you want to respond anymore, but then Supervisor Serna had a question too.
So I, I just wanted to, uh, kind of dovetail off of Supervisor Candy's, uh, question. But what my understanding, what this action, if approved, does do, uh, today is it does inextricably link, the, uh, any future decisions that we make about outstanding bargaining units, in terms of, uh, parity, in terms of making sure that all units would be, um, you know, given the, the same, um, consideration in terms of the use of whether it's general fund or ARPA funds or a blend of, of the two. And so there is, to me, it, it, there is, I, I don't know if it necessarily cancels or, or, you know, dampens the ability to further negotiate, but it does certainly change the circumstance of, uh, future negotiations, uh, in terms of, um, what this board would be asked to consider. Because if we were to, for instance, my, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Anne or, or anyone else, but for instance, if we were to negotiate a different amount for an outstanding bargaining unit, uh, if approved today, this means that we'd have to go back for each of the bargaining units, um, being, uh, recommended and adjust their amounts as well as, as the, uh, uh, an outstanding bargaining. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, so if you approve this item today, it allows us to proceed with loading the, either the, uh, cash stipend or the 40 hours, um, on people's payroll in February. Should we negotiate a higher amount with any other bargaining unit, we would not go back to the table with these bargaining units before you today. We would just modify their amounts to be consistent with whatever we, with, with, with whatever higher amount we bargained in another unit.
Right, I guess what I'm, I'm pointing out, Anne, is, is that if, if we were, let's say we were to simply put on the table for consideration and close or open session, uh, what we would do relative to, uh, UPE, uh, to the bargaining unit that, uh, Mr. Samara represents. My understanding is that if we were to, um, negotiate a higher, uh, amount, uh, than what is being proposed today, then the choice for the board is not just simply about what we would, uh, offer UPE. It necessarily would be coupled, uh, with all the units, uh, that are being considered today. So it would be an, actually a much greater, uh, amount that we would be asked to, to consider, would it not?
That is correct. You said that far more simply than I did. Thank you.
Well, I guess, I guess what, what, uh, troubles me a bit is it, it just feels at this point like we're, um, uh, I don't want to say pitting, uh, bargaining units against each other, but, um, it does. Introduce a, a particular stressor, if you will, to, to the outstanding negotiations. I think that to me would be a better way to describe. What could or would happen relative to not just UPE, but any other outstanding unit that's not covered in today's action. So I just wanted to make that clear and maybe. Ask the, uh, the CEO whether. We think that that's really kind of a appropriate way to proceed or one that is necessarily fair.
Well, I don't, we would not have proceeded if we thought that it was unfair or inappropriate, however. And it, it does not preclude continued discussions with any bargaining unit. We could certainly. Hold on this until all other bargaining units are complete. And it would just delay the provision of either the money or the hours. To the employees and those bargaining units that have agreed. But that is absolutely a decision you all could make.
Yeah, and I'm not, I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not accusing the CEO's office or any executive staff of putting forth. Anything that is inappropriate or unfair, I just, to me, this, the, the, the sequence of what we're being asked to consider. Changes what we would be considering substantially. Because if we were to adopt this today and we, you know. Considered the outstanding units later. Those considerations, those decisions that we would make about compensation through ARPA or the general fund. Are now just not about those units, it's about all the units. And it seems to me that it might be. More advantageous for, for all parties if we were to do our best to at least try one more time to consider them together. So it doesn't feel, at least for this board member, like. We're kind of being used as a fulcrum in, in the leveraging between units. That's not a very comfortable place to be, I guess, is what I'm saying. And I, you know, I, I put that out there for my colleagues to respond to or not, but that's kind of how I'm feeling right now about this particular item.
If I could, I, I would just say that, to your point Phil, and, and, you know, it's been a month since we last, or nearly a month since the board last convened. Obviously, we've been kept apprised both in closed session, but certainly as we, you know, worked through this under board's direction. At the, you know, at the bargaining table with, with all the units. I guess, as I think about the way you've portrayed it, but certainly in comments that Mr. Samara's made. That this is a little different than, you know, kind of normal negotiations where we have all of our contracts open and we work with units recognizing certainly. Important considerations and distinctions if, if, you know, of, of each of the units and the, you know, work is performed and so forth by the represented employees. But I, I, I think to your point that if we take this action today, then. You know, everything has been negotiated and there are these, you know, clauses that, you know, basically call out for parity. And I understand the other units calling for that, but it puts a little different backdrop and it would seem to me that. And again, I don't know what the, the. Schedule is for negotiations with these units and, and obviously, you know, what's been put on the record here today is, you know. A differ from obviously what's been agreed to here by these units, it was before us today and certainly. Board direction coming out of the last time that we, you know, took us up in closed session to our negotiators, so. You know, again, I, I recognize that there's a desire to try to, you know, put the money and or the credit of time. You know, to the employees that are going to receive it, there's some time in this to that, but I for one would. You know, be supportive, if we took another couple of weeks on this, we come back in the session, open session and if we wanted to have. Closed session around it or any other direction, I think we've given, you know, certainly the, you know, our staff has proceeded with the guidance they've received, but. Again, I, you know, I, I don't know that two weeks, it certainly will defer any. Of the pay in or hours that we kept under this item before us today, but we're still in negotiations with a number of units. It sounds like that even with the 18, that still leaves more than a half dozen units that are, you know, we're still somewhere else with too, so. Okay, I, other comments from board members, we have other callers too.
Just for the record, I'd be supportive of a two week delay so we can do what you've just explained.
All right, there's no other comments, let's go to, still, I'm still open on this item, so next public comment, Madam Clerk.
Yes, could you please transfer the caller? As of right now, we don't have any other callers besides the one coming in. Hi caller, you have three minutes to make your public comments, please start.
Hello, my name is Latroya Flornoy and I'm calling as a family service worker from Sacramento County Child Protective Services. And I would like to read a letter drafted by us for us in reference to the ARPA payment. Members of the board, the undersigned are writing on behalf of the family service workers with the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services. We felt our message would be conveyed stronger if the board heard directly from the workers that have been on the front line since the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. According to the CDC, essential workers are those who conduct a range of operations and services. In industries that are essential to ensure the critical functions in the United States. When hearing those words, many automatically think of doctors, nurses, grocery market workers and law enforcement. A group rarely mentioned and often overlooked are workers like us who provide critical social services. To countless vulnerable youth in the foster care system here in Sacramento County. We are here today to shed light on some of the duties that we've performed extraordinarily and diligently every hour of the past 22 months. While many DCFAS employees were able to work remotely from the safety of their homes. Most of our job responsibilities place us directly out in the community. During this pandemic, we oftentimes found ourselves taking children to placements throughout California. Even if the child had been diagnosed as COVID-19 positive. Family service workers were also sent to hospitals, particularly emergency rooms for the care and wellbeing of children. That had been removed from their home and now in the care of custody of this county. While in an environment in which the doctors and nurses were wearing personal protective equipment or PPE. Head to toe that included N95 mask and respirators. We were sent in with cloth mask, latex gloves and a small bottle of hand sanitizer. When that small supply was utilized, FSWs and/or family service workers had to use their personal resources without any reimbursement from the county. On average, a full-time FSW has worked approximately 3,840 hours during this past 22 months. This number doesn't include the hours worked by our on-call family service workers that provided services around the clock. To break it down, a premium payment of $1,500 would equate to 37 cents per hour. Working tirelessly. Through these unprecedented times deserves a more meaningful compensation. Family service workers have risked our own health and the health of our families at home, day in and day out. During this once in a lifetime global pandemic. We've demonstrated continued integrity and respect for the families that we serve every step of the way. As it stands, the mission statement for Sacramento County Protective Child Services states, they recognize that employees are better able. To accomplish our goals, when employees feel encouraged to reach their full potential. And also when employees are given a work environment that recognizes the value and importance of each role. It is now time to honor those words. Respectfully, the following undersigned family service workers of Sacramento County CPS. Latroya Flornoy, Priscilla Cochran Navara, Cindy Bazillion, Jamie Parfor, Jovan Newsom, Dana Bird, Deb Field. Jolene Widem, Victor Lee, Pajme Sandu, Kristen McCartney, Laura Lor, Irma Flores, Kayla Shue, Renee McDonald. Brittany Brockman, Kamara Earhart, Shannon Bishop and Ashley Franco. Thank you for your time and please, please consider making changes so that we do not continue to have to suffer without any proper compensation. I appreciate your time, bye-bye.
Thank you Latroya for your comments and thank you to your fellow family service workers for.
Supervisor. Uh, I'm sorry Chairperson, we have one more caller for this item.
Okay, all right, just a moment. Anyway, thank you to Latroya and Supervisor Serna, do you want to weigh in?
I was just going to make a motion at the appropriate time about continuing item seven, but let's, let's listen to our next commenter, please.
All right, so we'll hold for a second, okay, thank you Madam Clerk, let's go to the next caller, please.
Please transfer the caller.
The timer's up by the way, so thank you for that, that's helpful, I think.
You're welcome. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes to make your comment.
Good morning board, this is Gabrielle. I've been listening in to all the comments and negotiations and in my mind, there are no non-essential workers. Everybody has worked their tails off for the last two years to keep our county afloat, including county workers. My concern is that. Premium pay for a certain class of workers while other classes of workers are being fired for their medical choices is. It blows my mind, I'm looking at the COVID portal right now and the data shows the death rate is still trending down. All we're focused and hyper-focused on is cases. Whereas the death rate is .01, it, it trends lower than the seasonal flu, you know, when flu was actually paid attention to. So it bothers me how much money is going to be allocated through ARPA funding, wherever the money comes from, it is taxpayer funding. It does have to be reimbursed, repaid, it's, money doesn't fall from the sky. And so though I hear the negotiations on who should get what money and how much. My blanket concern, and I'm just putting it on record, my blanket concern is that we continue to withdraw money and accept money to spread out. For, for a flu or a cold, that yes, it hits some people differently, but if we stopped cold turkey testing everybody symptomatic or non. Our emergency would go away and we would just be dealing with those that needed medical help. So it bothers me to the core when I have, I can't even count how many people have been fired now. January 4th was a big, big date for blue-class workers for their final decision, are you going to disclose? Are you going to accept? And there's a lot of people out of work right now who are essential and we're seeing it, I don't know if you've been to the local grocery store. But we're seeing the effects of people being fired or laid off or refusing to continue to work under those conditions. Of their medical status constantly being asked for. So I'm just putting it on record because I know you guys are going to do what you're going to do. But there are a lot of essential workers in Sacramento County who are not asking for $1,500 premium pay or extra 40 hours. They're just asking to be left alone and allowed to make their own decisions to continue working. So that's my soapbox, thanks.
Okay, good, thank you, April. All right, Madam Clerk, any other comments?
Uh, we do not have any other comments for item seven at this time.
All right.
I'll go ahead and close the comment for item seven.
Thank you, and I'll bring it back to the board, Supervisor Serna.
Yes, I move, Mr. Chair, item, that we continue item seven for, until our next regularly scheduled board, board meeting.
Chair, one second. I'm sorry, Anne.
Supervisor Natoli, yeah, I just, we are going to need another closed session before we bring this back to open session. So we probably would come back to open session the first week, the first meeting in February so that we can have a closed session on the 25th.
That's, that's fine, I, I would move that, we then continue to that date.
Okay, all right, so we moving, move this time to February 11th, I believe, that's the next, that's the first meeting in February, is that correct?
It's actually on February 8th.
Excuse me, February 8th, okay, so February 8th. And we would set this for closed session under normal negotiation discussions for January 25th, so, okay, that's the motion, so. Any other comments by board members? All right, if not, then please call the roll, ma'am.
Yes, Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
And you have, excuse me, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you to all of our callers on that item. Other items?
You have no other public comments for your consent matters.
All right, so then our consent items are in order and I will, once we handle and pull item 47 off for. Additional comments, but we have our items and so. Let's bring the other, for the questions or comments, a motion being.
Desmond, I'll move the remainder of the consent items.
Serna, one second. Hey, Serna, one second, okay, so we have a motion by Desmond, seconded by Serna, to approve the consent, remaining items on the consent calendar, if there's. Further than, clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, and so Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Natoli.
Aye.
Unanimous vote and let the record reflect that that's for the consent matters items one through 50 with the exception of item seven and off agenda item number one.
You did have, we had a caller holding and I want to make some comments on item 47, but we did have one other off agenda item, did we want, we had one caller.
We do, can we take that, please?
Yeah, let's, let's do that, and yes, please.
Okay, go ahead and send the, we have a couple of callers for off agenda at this point, go ahead and send the first caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
I'm calling to ask if any of you have actually contacted the gentleman Ryan that has come in there multiple times. Cause I have and he has quite a bit information and it worries me that none of you have made attempts to reach out to him. To try and rectify this issue. I've been informed also that your guys' Cal-Win program, you are allowing individuals to categorize staff. Or those that come in. As in-office visits when in fact they are calling over the phone. I believe this is fraud and I would like an investigation to be done. As well as Ms. Edwards, you had once said in comments about Ethan Die. That he is very committed to doing the right thing with integrity all of the time. Ms. Edwards, have you read the email? That Ethan Die has written about Ryan? I do not believe so. Additionally, I have read emails that say things such as. For legal reasons, I should state that this is actually a unit meeting tomorrow. The potluck just happens to fall within the timeframe of the unit meeting. This email and other emails that I'm coming across. Tell your guys' lack of fiduciary responsibility. Are you guys aware that Ryan Harris was disciplined? For trying to do the right thing and enlightening staff because they were allowing potlucks to be held during COVID times. Also, there were individuals that came in and I believe spoke on his behalf, members of the citizens of the public. And one of those, they put an overhead up to be seen. When I went back to watch the meeting, you guys never showed that black man's item that he wanted to be on the overhead. he wanted to be on the overhead. There was a white woman that went before him. You did show what she had to put on the overhead, but you edited out what the black man had to put on the overhead. And it's my understanding that Ann Edwards had made a statement saying, you know, she is not racist because she is married to a black man. Some could say we keep our enemies closer. Also, in reviewing the past meetings, I have noticed you made people wait outside, Sue Frost, or you have segregated them from the meeting, forcing them to sit in other rooms. Yet you read before every meeting and it's posted on the door that no one is allowed in the meeting without a mask. If you go back and watch all the meetings, Sue Frost, where is your mask? Why are you not segregated with the rest of the people? What is it that continues to hold you, your staff, and your management above the very laws that they make? Reading another email, looks like where Ryan was disciplined, he had asked not to receive these emails and the program manager had replied and said, unfortunately, emails such as this are sent using a mass distribution list. The same one we use for overtime and emergencies, this email was about food in a break room. Again, lack of fiduciary responsibility.
Caller, I think you've exceeded the three minutes, give us additional time, so.
You, you said this is an HR issue. I read an email from Ryan back in about August where he requests from HR for his time sheet. HR said they would give him his time sheet. HR still has not given him his time sheet. Ryan continues to follow what you guys are requesting of him and you continue to punish him for doing so. You need to do better.
Thank you, caller. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any more callers, the other caller was not responding and staff tried to contact them and it went straight to their voicemail, so we did take an extra step to reach out to them, but we were unable to do, get a connection.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and then thanks to our callers, so that is our off agenda comments for this morning. With that, then we'll move to other items, I wanted to call out item 47, Madam Clerk, can we just call that item?
Okay, yes, so for item 47. Sorry, this is the resolution congratulating LeAnn Moffitt upon the occasion of her retirement.
Very good. Again, because we're meeting in this virtual format, I don't know that, you know, LeAnn, I trust you may be on the call here today, but we do have a resolution the board just approved unanimously and it honors Ms. Moffitt for her 33 years of distinguished service with the County of Sacramento, there is a framed resolution as we would do normally and we'll make sure that we present that to her, I believe she has an event with friends and colleagues next week, so we'll make sure it's presented, but I just wanted to call out, I've had the good fortune, certainly during my years of service, as have other members of this board, of working with LeAnn in her capacity, various capacities in the community and planning, planning and community development department for County of Sacramento, and I would just note that her efforts throughout the years have really made a difference, I think, certainly in the way we've approached some very challenging planning items, but her leadership during the very deep recession that we all experienced as a, as a country, but certainly as a county with the diminishment of the workforce due to layoffs and cutbacks that occurred, you know, earlier this, this century and the last decade. But her, again, she came in as director in 2010 with her appointment and has helped certainly guide the department, but has spent many, many hours with our board and certainly with Planning Commission and with other advisory councils in working through a variety of really challenging planning matters, including the updates of the general plan in 2011 and, you know, the update of the American River Parkway Plan and other efforts, and I trust my colleagues may want to weigh in on this as well. Her work on the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, which was an effort that all told was probably 25 years in the making, and LeAnn was in her role as planning director during the time when this board only adopted that, obviously we're now looking to implementation, we're, we're a few years in, but I want to just say she's been a real delight to work with, she always takes phone calls from, at least from this supervisor, I'm sure from my colleagues as well, just about any time of the day and evening, and has, again, been a strong spokesperson for good solid planning and provided leadership and mentoring for, you know, her staff as she's helped to rebuild the ranks of the planning department, so I just want to offer kudos to her for, you know, stellar career. She's a Sac State graduate and came to work here at the county and this is where she's made her career over the past 30-plus years, and so on behalf of the county, want to just extend our congratulations and thank you for her professionalism, for her dedicated service and, you know, offer best wishes to LeAnn and to her husband and children and for, as we would offer to anyone, but certainly, certainly good health, much happiness, many blessings in the years to come, I know she'll have some time to herself, but again, she's been a tremendous leader in the planning realm and I've, and I know, as I know others have appreciated her leadership, her work over the years, so with that, I see a whole litany of hands here, so I'll go down to my colleagues and, and they want to make comments as well, so Supervisor Serna, Desmond, and Frost, in that order, so.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So as you eloquently put it all done, you know, LeAnn is someone that I think will be sorely missed by a number of us, and it is a career that I, I feel I have kind of a unique connection to, and a particular department head that I have a unique connection to, and more than one, one way, certainly the first being that we both are, have been students of urban planning and practitioners of, of the planning practice, and, you know, that's been something that has proven to be, I think, very useful to me and helpful to me in my capacity over these past nearly dozen years as a member of this board. I will note that I believe her, LeAnn's career actually started in 1988, it was the late 80s, at the county, and that was about the time that, long before I had any idea that I would one day have the honor of serving on this board, but that was about the same time that I entered the planning profession from a slightly different angle as someone that worked his way through the housing construction and development business and certainly had a chance to meet and get to know LeAnn from the other side of the counter, so to speak, when it just came to something as mundane as processing permits down at the, down at the county. And so I say all this just to acknowledge and recognize that our two, our two career paths have kind of mirrored each other in different and interesting ways, and I not only consider her a fellow professional in the, the planning field, but certainly a friend and someone that I think has really done a, you know, his job of, you know, doing a, taking on a very difficult and challenging role. It's at different points in time here with the county when it comes to the balance between economic development and growth and how best to manage it responsibly and with an eye towards environmental protection, but at the same time, you know, responsive and responsible economic growth here in the county, so never an easy job for any planning director or, you know, planner in, in public, in public office, but I think, again, to your point, I think she's done, done a great job in her tenure and she will be missed, thanks.
Thanks, Phil. Rich?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and boy, I sure hope LeAnn is listening to all these accolades today. I certainly echo the sentiments of Chair Natoli and Supervisor Serna, and I just want to, you know, I came into this a year ago and LeAnn was very, very patient with me in terms of all the issues that, that come up in these urbanized, unincorporated areas, and I too feel like I had a unique relationship with her because I probably bothered her more than just about any of the other board members, so.
You'd be surprised.
But I, she just, I, I real, she was just such a pleasure to work with and taking the time to educate me about a lot of these planning issues and certainly did, I think, struck the right balance between, you know, land use decisions that are not overly onerous while also keeping an eye towards best practices in terms of environmental protection and, and just good growth strategies in the county, and, and just on a personal level, I just really wish LeAnn the best, I think she's really a class act and, and I enjoyed, you know, every interaction I had with her, and I just wish her the best in retirement, thank you.
Phil?
Yes, I would, I'd like to echo what others have said, but I want to especially thank you, I, I don't know if LeAnn is here, I wish I could look at her and, and say this because I, it, I really mean it from my heart, I've been here since, since 2017 and she's been instrumental in helping me with some pretty unique problems with, if it was, you know, trying to find some old maps from way back, who knows when, but LeAnn knew about them and that could be the solution in a, to a problem in Rancho Marietta, to businesses in Ran, in Rio Linda who needed some zoning solutions, how can we make this work, this unusual situation work within a zoning overlay, which we're still working on, I hope everyone else in the department knows about it, to the SPA in Orangevale and solutions on how we can pull together a community to be happy along that commercial corridor and the public, the public process that LeAnn helped us through so many times. LeAnn is, has, has kind of a calming and professional demeanor and she's super smart and she has a way of helping, you know, helping you out and at the same time helping you through these sometimes challenging public process, which can, can sometimes be emotional when, and personal for people, so I, I just want to thank LeAnn Moffitt for the dedication and professionalism and commitment to the county and, and, and wish, wish you every, all the best in your retirement, I hope you have a wonderful retirement, thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Anne?
Yes, thank you. I want to first sort of say ditto to everything that all of you have said, but I want to personally thank LeAnn for not only her years of service and her dedication to good planning. Planning is something, when I came into this position, is very new for me, and she has been very patient with me in educating me about the work that she does, that she and her team do, she's done this work for a long time, sometimes under very difficult circumstances, and I do agree, agree that she is a professional class act and I really, LeAnn, want to wish you a wonderful retirement, I know that you're not done, done with some work, but I also know you're looking forward to spending time with your family and I really want to thank you for all the help you've provided me and to wish you well in your retirement.
Thanks, Anne. Well, but a miracle of this virtual environment is, is LeAnn available, would you like to?
Yes.
We usually get an opportunity.
Yeah, I am, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can, we can see you, but we can hear you.
Excellent, yeah, I really should retire more frequently because you all have had such nice things to say, I really appreciate it, so thanks so much for this opportunity to make some final remarks to the board, it's really difficult to adequately find the words to express my appreciation to each of you for all of your support and for the relationship that I've had with you. In my role, I really get to see how much you each care about planning matters and the community as a whole and individual residents, just so everybody out there who's listening and watching really understands that, I appreciate your passion and support to planning and environmental review and, you know, we continue to work on things like affordable housing and the item you had, you know, on the trust fund on your consent agenda, social justice issues, you were one of the first boards to adopt an environmental justice element in the state, items, Dawn, you referenced the South SAC HCP, items related to preserving natural resources, I know the Climate Action Plan is a big passion for you and staff are working hard to get that Phase 2B plan in front of you and any number of contentious plans for large new communities, they're all great planning matters and you all weigh in and are so thoughtful and so helpful as we bring those items for you forward. I leave knowing that you're going to continue to have an amazing team of planners who are going to support you, I want to give out a shout out to my team of Chris Puhuli, Todd Smith, Wendy Hartman, Joelle Enman, and Belinda Wikizabotz, who've been such a huge support to me. I am excited to be joining the large group of retirees who, absent COVID, get together regularly for lunch, so I now get to finally go do that, I will say I'm going to miss participating in a great community planning advisory committee meeting or a planning commission meeting when you really get to roll at your sleeve and, and get in with a community and resolve an issue and explain a process and there's nothing more, more rewarding to a planner than having a success out with the community there, but with all of that, I thank each of you for my personal relationship with you, for a great 33 and a half years of coming to 827 7th Street, and I do remain available if I can ever be of any assistance, thanks.
Thank you, LeAnn, we're glad you're able to join us and thanks for your kind words and I think as you heard from each of us has spoken that obviously we've enjoyed the, I think, ability to work with you, but certainly to, you know, I think with your presence and calming influence, but also your, your knowledge and, and again, always I would just, it struck me as I listened to my colleagues and even as you were speaking that, you know, you've been solution oriented and I think that's really important, that's a, something that, you know, they may teach that in school, but you certainly put it into practice and I think, you know, the sage advice and wise counsel as you, you know, gained in experience and so forth and obviously worked with your team of folks, have made a difference and you've left in, you know, I would say there's indelible imprint, not just because of planning, but because of decisions that have been made and direction that's been given, it relates to any number of items, big and small, and so again, you can, and I know you will, take great pride in, in that, in certainly your personal accomplishments, but things that you've had a hand in, working with this board and working with, you know, top county leadership, but working with communities and you never lost that sense of importance to residents, neighborhoods, business people, environmental, you know, supporters and so forth, just the whole realm that planning touches any given issue and certainly throughout the course of, you know, career, so congratulations, all the best to you and I know we'll be seeing you around, so, and we'll get the resolution to you, so. Again, all right, any other comments, if not, again, congratulations, LeAnn, thanks my colleagues and to County Executive for your comments and we'll, that, that actually is the first, this is the first, Madam Clerk, isn't this the first resolution of the year, so, 11122 is the first resolution?
It's, well, it's your first presentation, it's not your first resolution, you had some resolutions, I believe, item two.
Okay, well, it's among the first, anyway.
It's the first framed one.
First framed one, that's right, we got it, very good.
Chairperson, I do want to let you know that the off agenda caller that was, that we tried to get back on the line, we, we have them on the line now, so I'm going to ask staff to transfer them, is that okay?
Okay, sure, you bet, okay, thanks again, LeAnn, and we'll move back to off agenda and then back to. Okay, sure. You bet. Okay. Thanks again, Leanne. And we'll move back to off agenda and then back, then into our hearing items.
Okay, please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. So this is Gabrielle. And the irony is I had been calling to talk about how the meetings like this kind of close off the public. You guys can't control phone issues, but given the fact that I, I think it was three minutes that the operator was very kindly trying to talk to me and I was answering, he couldn't hear me. And then you guys tried to call me. And so here I am now. But meetings closed to the public lend to technical issues that suppress our voices. And the irony is that was just proven here. That, that has been happening for the last few years with phone comment, though not always as severe. My concern and the, the main reason why I wanted to call is why is there no COVID update today? We've got the county, I mean, everybody's pushing emergency, emergency, emergency. Schools are closing due to staff shortages. You guys are closing in person due to cases. Would that not warrant an update from the emergency team? So I would like to request that we go back to every two weeks. I know it's mundane to constantly have the COVID update. I know that it puts pressure on Dr. Kassiri and Shavak Kassari's time. But if we're going to perpetuate this government-led emergency, then those that are in the field driving that should be here updating us on case rates, on death rates. Actually, I don't want to hear case rates anymore. I want to hear death rates and therapeutics and, and those things. If we're going to get out of this insanity, it's not going to be by continuing to ignore the therapeutics that are out there. But there is no reason that in-person public comment cannot be made for the last two years. There's segregation that's been happening absolutely. So that is my request, is that we get the COVID update back on the agenda every two weeks. If you guys are in session, unless it's like a special session that's off, not on a Tuesday, I can understand that. But if you're in session on a Tuesday, they should be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Gabrielle. We will have a COVID update, I believe, on the 25th though. Is that correct? Yeah. Yes. Okay. And I understand the request. We went to every month versus every two weeks. Is that what we did with Board Direction?
That is, that is accurate.
I understand Gabrielle's request, but anyway, this will be on the, the COVID update will be on the agenda for the Tuesday, the 25th. So, all right. Very good. Okay. Thanks to our caller, Supervisor Frost. Hand up.
I was just going to say, we went to every month, with the exception, if there's any meaningful changes, we would have an additional meeting if something came up.
Okay. All right. Any further off agenda comments, Madam Clerk?
We do not have any other off agenda comments.
All right. Well, with that, then we're going to go to our timed items. And I believe our first one is our item 52. So I'll let you call those into record and we'll get started.
Thank you. Item 52 is the authority to amend and increase mental health expenditure contracts by $25,915,886 through June 30th, 2022. Approve a salary resolution amendment adding three full-time equivalent positions and approve an appropriations adjustment request to add $13,107,042 to the Department of Health and Service, Health Services fiscal year 2021-22 adopted budget to support mental health peer certification implementation in alignment with the Mental Health Services Act expansion.
Very good. We have Shavon Cuthbert and Ryan Quist as our presenters. So good morning.
Good morning, Board. I wanted to just make a few opening comments and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ryan Quist, our Behavioral Health Director. So just in opening, I just wanted to acknowledge that Health Services has a lot of items on today's agenda. We have the Mental Health Services Act item, Laura's Law or Assisted Outpatient Treatment, the CAL AIM Implementation item, as well as some requests through ARPA. It goes without saying that the health and human services field and our issues are right now at the center of attention when it comes to federal, state, and, and local involvement. Our department is really working overtime to make sure that we're taking every opportunity to leverage the resources available to us to best serve the community on your behalf. And so I just wanted to say upfront apologies for seeing us and hearing us so much today. But rest assured that we are working to get the services out to your constituents, our community. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Quist for the presentation.
Thanks, Shavon.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Ryan Quist, Behavioral Health Director, Sacramento County. Next slide, please. Today, we're here to give you an update and talk about some further work that we're doing as it relates to Mental Health Services Act, also known as MHSA. This is a 1% income tax. It was voter approved, 1% income tax on individuals who make more than $1 million in a year. And these funds go directly to mental health services. As a part of the regulations, it includes a very extensive community planning process. And here in Sacramento County, we work with our MHSA Steering Committee to meet those requirements. Also work with our Mental Health Board. And then of course, now here we are talking with you, the Board of Supervisors regarding our, our plans. Now, the community planning process also includes regular updates to our, our, our plan, which includes annual updates, which are, really includes the three-year plan and then annual updates thereafter for the non-three-year plan years. Next slide, please. So back in 2019, I came before you and reported that we had $135.6 million in unspent MHSA funds and that we were brought forward some proposals on how to further expand services within the community to use those funds to meet the needs of the community. And so over the last couple of years, we've continued to do that work. In spite of COVID, we've accomplished quite a bit. Next slide, please. And I'm not going to go over every single one of these, but this gives you a little bit of an idea, the range of activities that we've been working on since that, since that discussion, 2019. Next slide, please. Here most recently, well, that more recently anyway, in 2020, we implemented these additional, these additional programs. So in spite of COVID, we continue to, continue to build up these programs and begin to bring these additional resources to our community. Next slide, please. And we also continue to invest in our homeless initiatives. Sacramento County Behavioral Health has increased commitments over, over the years. And now we're sustaining those, those commitments, as well as continuing to work on initiatives such as No Place Like Home that you heard about today, where we continue to identify additional ways that we can address behavioral health challenges for those who are homeless. Next slide, please. When COVID first set in, we began hearing all over the state, everybody was pretty much messaging the same thing, that because of a possible recession or the impacts of COVID, that, that we would see a reduction in MHSA revenue. And so that was concerning. And we started actually sort of wondering if we were going to have to cut back on some of our programs. Never been happier to be wrong, that it turns out the revenues did not dip. They continued to go and actually been increasing at levels greater than we anticipated. Even in yesterday's state budget presentation, there are indications that MHSA has even increased more than we were anticipating. So the good news is, is that the funds continue to, continue to come in during this time of extreme need for behavioral health services. Also would like to note that there is a requirement in MHSA for us to maintain a prudent reserve. And our requirement based on our, the size of our allocations is $13 million a year. And we are in compliance with that prudent reserve requirement. Next slide, please. So this figure shows you what, up to this point, what our, our unspent MHSA funds look like in terms of how things are changing. And then it also provides projections into the future that if we, if you approve the, if you approve the proposals that are before you today, what our future unspent funds will look like. Next slide, please. And then this slide shows how our expenditures have been going up from year to year based on the availability of the revenue. So once again, it shows up to this point. And then if you approve the proposals before us today, that, how they will continue to, the expenditures will continue to increase into future years. Next slide, please. So what we're, what we're seeing now, I think now more than ever, everybody is very aware of behavioral health needs of our communities. And here during this pandemic, we have seen increased needs for behavioral health services. So we, these proposals to a large extent are in response to the present need. Our surplus has got, has gone down, but not as quickly as we thought it would be. And so this gives us an opportunity to take a look at our existing funds and invest those funds into the community to continue to meet these significant needs that are here present during this pandemic. One of the other things I wanted to note was that even before COVID, one of my main talking points was regularly that we have a behavioral health workforce shortage. Since the pandemic, we are now talking about it as a behavioral health workforce crisis. It's difficult to be able to find individuals who are, have the experience and expertise to be able to do this work. And it's become a very competitive environment for this limited number of, of individuals who can do this work. So we are in a workforce crisis. And that's also part of the information that's going into these proposals. Next slide, please. So MHSA Steering Committee met and has voted in support of some proposals that we're bringing for you today. These are the full list of proposals and I'm going to go through them one by one. Next slide, please. The first proposal is, in order to address our workforce crisis, we recommend 10% increase to rates. Originally, when I spoke with the MHSA Steering Committee, I brought forward to them a proposal to increase rates by 7%. The Steering Committee opted to make a motion to recommend 10% increase to rates. And I think a lot of it has to do with that we, we are all acknowledging the fact that it is so difficult to be competitive in our recruitment and retention of staff. The next one is to actually address the increased need for behavioral health services. And in this regard, the recommendation is to increase capacity by 7% across the provider network. We're also looking at, for our FSP programs, adding capacity through expanded FSP slots. Next slide, please. In addition, another initiative that is currently relevant to our priorities is that SB 803 introduced a new peer certification program to support the role of peers in behavioral health services. Peers are individuals with lived experience with mental health challenges. And it's a evidence-based practice supported by Federal Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration that peers should be involved in the delivery of services. And so State of California introduced, passed this bill, SB 803, and the state is now implementing peer certification. And so in order to incorporate that here in Sacramento County, we, we're interested in adding some peer management positions. These peer management positions would represent different perspectives. Three different positions would represent different perspectives. One perspective is that of consumer. Another perspective is that of a family member of an adult consumer. And another perspective is that of a parent of a, a youth consumer. In addition to these three positions that we are bringing for you, bringing before you, we also are taking one of our existing health program manager positions and converting that into a individual with lived experience as well. So for this proposal, we already had, had that position that we're converting for that purpose. But for this particular proposal, we're asking to add these three additional positions. Next slide, please. In addition, our current urgent care program is funded by innovation funds, which are time-limited funds. Once those time-limited funds are used, county has the option of continuing on that program with addition, with alternative funding, pots of funding. And so we are proposing that we will continue on the urgent care, the, the Mental Health Services Act Steering Committee was very supportive of continuing on the urgent care program. This has been well received by the community. I get lots of favorable feedback about it. As a matter of fact, we have been working on trying to ramp it up to 24/7. Omicron has made that a little bit difficult, but that is something that we're still working towards. So the recommendation is to fund urgent care on an ongoing basis using the community supports and services funds instead of the innovation funds. Next slide, please. So this is the total initiatives that are being brought before you. They do, and they do draw down federal Medi-Cal revenue as well. So the total annual increase to our MHSA commitment would be $24.5 million. Next slide, please. So the current actions for this, this board letter are to authorize, to amend our MHSA contracts and add the 10% rate increase and 7% service capacity increase, get authority to increase our FSP capacity, to amend our existing contracts, and then to add three FTE behavioral health peers, I'm sorry, peer specialist program manager positions to lead our peer certification implementation. Next slide, please. And then in the future, we will include the urgent care program as a part of our annual update to be funded by our community services and supports funding pot as opposed to the innovation going forward. And we will also return to the board in, to request contract authority for new FST, FSP programs. Should mention, the FSP programs are going to be focused on a number of new permanent supportive housing projects that are coming live here in 2022. And so this is helping us prepare to meet the needs of the, the service needs for individuals who are in those permanent supportive housing. And next slide, please. Is that it? That was it?
Okay. Thanks, Ryan and Shavon. I have a couple of members, hands up. So we'll go to board members for questions. Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Quist, for the presentation. It's great to hear from you. You know, it strikes me, as I'm listening to you, that it's both good and bad, you know, that the, it's, it's a, it's tragic that we need to have a lot more growth to meet the need because we're seeing such an increased need for, for behavioral health services. But it's certainly a good thing to hear the, the programs that you're coming up with. Really excited about at some point moving our urgent care to a 24/7. I think that's, that's great. I hear the same thing about urgent care. I'm very supportive of this matter today and certainly your efforts. I, I just want to, I thank you really also for the, for the chart you prepared with respect to the, for the, to the reserves. You know, I know this board prior to my tenure went through a, a lot of, there were a lot of challenging times in terms of that reserve and, and reserve not being spent. And boy, I mean, my hats off to all of my, my colleagues and you and county staff because you've done such great work over the last several years to bring more programs online to serve this, this population that's so much in need. And that our reserve projected to be down to a much more, much more prudent level. Something I asked our county exec yesterday during our, our talks, and typically when I come up with a, with an idea, usually staff is a few steps ahead of me. And in this instance, Shavon responded, my question was about doing an evaluation of the. capacity we have, both acute, subacute, outpatient and evaluating what else is needed. And so Siobhan, I just want to thank you for the response. And maybe could you just comment briefly, you mentioned that there's going to be a, a Rand study evaluation of that very thing in terms of our behavioral health response in Sacramento County?
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to. And then I can ask Dr. Quist to add anything. You know, one of the things we do recognize is that we do have capacity issues in terms of the number of beds that we need to serve people. However, what we want to really drill down on with this study that Rand is going to be helping us with and Cal Mesa, the California Mental Health Services Authority, is to be able to really look at what levels do we need those beds? So we know that we have acute beds for like psychiatric inpatient care. We also need a number of subacute beds is what we call them. So basically step down beds where we can move people when they're well enough to move back into the community. And so those are the nuances of bed capacity that we're working to assess so that we can build out that capacity over time. We know the governor's budget has shown and your board investments have shown that we're really invested in seeing how we can move people out of more restrictive settings, whether that be institutions or jails. And so we are really looking to build out that capacity, hoping to have the results in the spring. And then we'll bring those back to the board as well as some proposals as to what we intend to do about closing some of those gaps or needs. And I'll ask Dr. Quist if he wants to add anything. Thank you for the question.
Um, just, just to note that in the last couple of months, we had a new Sacramento behavioral health care hospital join our community, which brought another 117 psychiatric hospital beds to the community. And then just prior to that, we opened a new 16-bed psychiatric health facility, which added another 16 beds that are dedicated to Medi-Cal consumers that the county has purchased all those beds. And so we have to acknowledge that Omicron has brought new challenges in terms of being able to keep admissions happening, but we are continuing to work towards these types of issues that you, you raised, Supervisor.
Thank you so much, Ryan. I appreciate that so much. And just the last thing is the other discussion I had with, with Ann yesterday was, you know, we're, with respect to homelessness, and I know behavioral health is a much larger population than, than some of those folks experiencing homelessness, of course. But it always, it seems like it comes up, and I'm sure Supervisor Kennedy would relate to this. I hear a lot from some city council members and others, and even members of the media that the county needs to be doing more, needs to be doing more in terms of behavioral health. And as I'm listening to you provide your, this presentation today, it just struck me. Do we ever go to, or maybe make, make ourselves available to, to come and provide this presentation? For instance, at a city council to educate those elected officials about what we're doing countywide? Because I think a lot of times, and we've, we've said this before here during our meetings, that the county does not do a very good job at times of publicizing the good work that, that you were all doing in the community. Just want to put it out there because honestly, in some of my discussions I have with city council members, when they bring this up, I'm going to say, you know, we're doing a heck of a lot more than you think. And wouldn't it be great if maybe Dr. Quist could come provide a presentation at your city council meeting about all the things we're doing? But anyway, just, just throw it out there as, as a thoughts and an observation. I, I do want to follow up with you, Siobhan and Dr. Quist, in response to your offer to sit down and talk more about this because I'm, I'm always need to be educated more about what you're doing and ways I can continue to support your efforts. But thank you very much for the, the presentation today and everything.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Rich. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Siobhan and Dr. Quist for the presentation. And I'll start by saying I couldn't agree more with my colleague Supervisor Desmond about the interest and need to work more closely, I think, with the media, especially to educate them, especially editorial boards about what it is that the county does do and what we accomplish. And if there's misinformation, perhaps unintended by local media outlets about what we do and don't do when it comes to, especially when it comes to public health and behavioral health. I think we should be bold enough to point out those omissions or errors when they occur. And unfortunately, it's my opinion that they occur much too frequently. So couldn't agree more with, more with you Supervisor Desmond. One of the, one of the things that I guess continues to interest me when it comes to kind of measuring our progress in this, what I'll call, you know, continuing new day of mental health services act utilization since, since a few years ago, as Supervisor doesn't point out, we kind of had a watershed moment where we reconsidered how fast and for what purposes we ought to perhaps reconsider at that point. You know, Prop 63 funds. I guess what, what continues to interest me, which I don't necessarily see as prominent in the presentation, which, which that may change based on what Siobhan said earlier about the Rand study. But what I would like to see in addition to the graphs and charts that denote surplus changes and expenditure changes, I would like to see superimposed on that even some measurements of what we or what the state concludes are measures of success when it comes to the utilization of MHSA dollars. The objective, I think we can all agree, is not the simple acquisition, surplusing and expenditure of Prop 63 dollars. The objective is to use those resources to improve the lives of people that need help. And I know that that can be kind of perhaps a subjective thing, but I've got to believe there are some professional measures of how people that do need help and that receive it through the use of mental health services act dollars get better. And whether that's going from a different status of acute to subacute. I don't, you know, I don't know. There's probably some privacy issues there too that we'd have to certainly respect. But it would be very telling and very interesting, at least for this board member to see with these updates. What, you know, what, how do we, how do, how have we succeeded in the ultimate objective? The, the interim objective is simply the utilization of the resources. But, and that's all fine and good. But again, I think we need to pay the closest attention to the people that were attempting to, to help and, and measure that in some, some rational way that can be tracked over time. So that would be my suggestion. I don't know if Siobhan or Dr. Quist have any thoughts about that, but, or Bruce. But I think that's an important aspect of what we're being asked to consider when we, when we hear these reports.
Thank you for that Supervisor Serna. As a part of our annual report, we do report out on the outcomes of our various programs. And so we will be bringing back the annual report before July, hopefully. And so we'll, we'll make special attention to make sure that we highlight the outcomes that are reported as a part of that process.
Terrific. And I appreciate that. I, I think there's, there's lingering focus from just, you know, three, four years ago, when the media and others in local elective office were, were so focused on, you know, the county's expenditure of Prop 63 dollars that I think what got lost in that whole conversation or, or criticism leveled at the county is, well, you know, regardless of what the spending burn rate is, or how much we have in surplus, how many people are we actually helping? So I think this is kind of high time. We, we kind of take, take charge and shift that conversation a bit to what we're really attempting to do. So thank you for that.
Thanks. Bruce?
Thank you Supervisor and Supervisor Serna. Thank you for those comments. I just wanted to add to the discussion by saying that to your point, it's not just a matter of expending the resources. And yes, back a few years ago, that I think the community had a reason to raise questions about the amount that we weren't spending. But as Ryan pointed out in his slides, we're not only putting the money out there, but we're putting it out there in close work with the steering committee and with other stakeholders. I think that's equally important to make sure we use it wisely. So we'll be happy to provide that progress report that Ryan just mentioned.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you for your response. And I would just note that but certainly said it well, but I, as I saw this, you know, 7% additional service capacity. Again, it occurred to me that not just, you know, measuring units of service, but I think to the point about outcomes and certainly the annual report often has you know, quotes and/or some vignettes about, you know, some of the successes that have been achieved, some of the impacts it's had on people, their own personal situations, their families and, and, and others in the community. But I do think that's an important, not to lose sight of that. It's not just about the dollars and cents or even the programmatic themes. But you know, what are the impacts as best we can understand them? Certainly the volume, the people we're able to reach in, in number, but also I think the, you know, important impacts and hopefully success stories and the positive outcomes that come because we're able to reach folks in different, different settings and different environments and obviously meet their needs as it relates to health challenges and mental health challenges that they may be experiencing. So I concur that that's really important because sometimes it gets more about the dollars and, or how many units of service you have available and who, you know, who's taking advantage of them. But you know, what are the outcomes? And so I think it's a good comment. My colleague, I appreciate Bruce and Ryan responding to them as well. So look forward to seeing more on that as we move forward into the year. All right. Any other members of the board? Lee on this. Okay. If not, do we have, Madam Clerk, do we have any callers?
We do have one caller on the line and I'm going to ask staff to transfer that caller now. Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Nick White. I'm calling concerning the, how to improve the mental health. And the best way to do that is to resolve the COVID crisis that we're in. I noticed that for the last two months, the board hasn't even put on the agenda COVID and related issues. And over the last six months, there've been 800 deaths in California or in Sacramento alone. And the board has had a chance to do something about it since July and it's been nothing. And places like Contra Costa County and San Francisco County have mandated vaccines and IDs for restaurants, lawns and bars. And although their rates of, of are going up, the hospitalizations aren't and the deaths aren't. In Sacramento, hospitalizations have gone crazy and the deaths have, as I said, 800 people dead in the last six months. So I'm hoping that the board will do something about this. And instead of sitting on its hands the way it has been the last six months. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. White. Okay. Any other callers?
Chairperson, that is the final caller and I will close the queue at this time.
Okay. Bring it back to the board. Any other comments or questions before?
Like Moose's staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Supervisor Kennedy, seconded by Supervisor Desmond to move the staff recommendation.
Supervisors Frost?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Very much. Hey, next item.
Okay, for item 53, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is to award a contract, the Waterman Road Water Treatment Plant Tank Number Two Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $1,398,951 to Paso Robles Tank Incorporated.
Okay, very good. We have staff reported, I believe, a presentation and folks available. Mike Quid and Steve Pimentel are available from our, our resources. Is there a brief staff report on this?
Yes, they should be on the line via Zoom.
Pimentel. Mike, Mike Quid. You're on mute, Mr. Pimentel. There you go.
How about now? Hi, I'm the operation and maintenance manager, I'm sorry, the manager of the operations is the maintenance engineering section of the Sacramento County Water Agency. I'm here to present our recommendation to award contract number 4408, the Waterman Road Water Treatment Plant Tank Number Two Rehabilitation Project to Paso Robles Tank Incorporated. This project consists of coating the inside and outside of a three and a half million gallon water storage tank and other facilities tied to that tank. The contract also replaces the internal support rafter beams and does other various steelwork for the treated water tank. We received four bids for this project. The low bidder, Eurostyle Management, submitted a bid that did not include a California class C-51 structural, structural steel contractor's license per the project specifications. Their bid also did not include a subcontractor with a C-51 license. The tank metal work is more than 50% of the contract work. So if that work was to be performed by a subcontractor, that subcontractor would have to be listed on their bid. Because of this, SCWA rejected the low bid from Eurostyle Management. And on November 5th, 2021, SCWA issued a notice of intentional award to Paso Robles Tank. No protests were filed in the five-day protest period noted in the notice of intentional award. SCWA is recommending to accept and award the lowest responsive and responsible bid of $1,398,951 from Paso Robles Tank for the Waterman Road Treatment Plant Take Number Two Project. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, for your presentation. I don't know if we have any callers on this, but let me go to board members first. Are there any questions?
We do not have any public comments at this time.
No board member comments and seeing no public comments. And we'll go back, come back to the board then for a motion.
Approval.
Second.
Right. Moved by Frost, seconded by Kennedy to move the staff recommendation as outlined, both written report and summarized by Mr. Pimentel at his presentation. Further than I asked the clerk, please call the board.
Supervisors Frost?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mike. I guess Mike's going over though, sounds like from today's earlier agenda is moving over to the water quality section. So Mike, thank you for your work with the water supply side of it. And we'll see you on the other side, I guess, with the sanitation district. Is that correct?
That is correct. And you know, just so I have a minute, I do want to thank Michael Peterson and Kerry Schmitz for, for all they've done for me and, and all they do for SCWA. And so yes, I'm, I'm moving on. Thank you and I'll, I'll see you all soon.
Yeah, good. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Steve. Okay, very good. All right, next item.
Item 54, you are acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the This is the, to approve the Cordova Recreation and Park District Development Impact Fee Program. Introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 16.157 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the establishment of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Development Impact Fees. You're waiving reading of the ordinance and continuing to January 25th, 2022 for adoption. The environmental determination is exempt for this project.
Okay, thank you Madam Clerk. Let me, since this is either the third or fourth hearing on this item, I want to maybe get order of presentations and response back. And I know, Anne, if you wanted to weigh in as well, but I know it's the last hearing, we asked, we had written commentary, we've asked both county council and staff to come back. I believe we have obviously other interested parties, including obviously the Park and Recreation District folks that may want to weigh in. So what sort of order do we want to take this in and as far as the presentations today, so?
Well, I think we have it listed as Dorothy going first, then Bob, then Patrick Larkin and then the park, Bob Thurbin from Cordova Park and Rec at the end.
Okay, so we'll take county staff first and then if we have other, now, we did have county council did review based upon board member request too. So at some point in time, we'll want Lisa to and or if she has Mr. Parrish, but never to respond as well. But let's go in the order that you just listed, then we can have Dorothy and Bob Davis and do the initial presentation and then we can hear from, I think maybe from council and then hear from both Patrick Larkin and Mr. Thurbin, any other interested parties. So, okay, very good. Okay, turn to you Dorothy and Bob. Good morning Dorothy, we see your voice, or your audio is on, but you don't. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yeah, Dorothy having technical difficulties?
We can check with her offline.
And I know Bob, then did you want to carry this?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just give me a second here. I imagine Dorothy's having a technical ability because I know she's two offices over from me and she has a presentation prepared.
Okay.
One thing I could do, I can go knock on her door and bring over to my office to do her presentation as opposed to me trying to do her presentation without her speaking points. So, okay, if you'll allow me, I will do that.
Yeah, we will, thanks.
One other option too, Chairperson Natoli, I'm not sure if you would want to deviate from this item. We could go to your nominations.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can Dorothy.
Okay, I apologize for that. Yes, technical difficulties. And thank you for summarizing as far as the presentation and as far as the order. So just real quick in summary, this item, as you mentioned, was continued from December 7th in, due to correspondence and legal analysis that was submitted by the Building Industry Association, the BIA. As you mentioned, both county council and district legal counsel have responded. And as you mentioned, they are available to answer any questions that have arisen. And just in summary though, the BIA has focused and brought attention to potential errors that have regarding the calculation of the Quimby dedication requirements. We at this time emphasize that the current Quimby calculation factor has been in the county code since the 90s and it is independent of today's endeavor and does not invalidate the current nexus study. While, as I mentioned, that Quimby factor discussion was separate, staff still advises that the closed, the use of the closed gun range is, is excuse me, it does not invalidate the factor, the use of the gun range is applicable and meanwhile, the trails calculation was not used in the level of service. In summary though, the proposed fee conforms with the Mitigation Fee Act and the Jackson Corridor Master Plans is in line with comparable master plan communities. And it is the result of an eight-year endeavor which involved the counties, which involved county staff, the district and multiple meetings with the BIA. Today's action is more encompassing than the single park fee and it would, has implication on the Jackson Corridor Master Plan Projects and park fees and Quimby requirements for other districts. So therefore, in conclusion, the staff recommends approval of today's actions. And as Supervisor Chair Natoli mentioned, county staff, council and members of the Corridor of a team are available for any questions that may arise.
Okay, thank you Dorothy. Turn to colleagues for questions. I just, I had one I wanted to ask you. It was in the written staff report, but there was some discussion about coming off of previous hearings on this about, you know, what was suggested, at least from one of the other parties and BIA representatives as related to a much lower fee. Your staff analysis did include a comparison of kind of the infill versus the new development fee structure that's being utilized, at least in largely in this county, much of the unincorporated area, but not solely. Is that accurate?
Um, correct, yes.
And maybe I just be a little more specific. So it is the fee that's being supported by staff via, obviously the nexus study and what's before us today. That is comparable to other new growth communities in the county? Is that accurate?
Correct, and the $7,000-ish fee that was suggested by the BIA, as you mentioned, that is more in line with infill developments and not with that provide a different level of standard and are not providing the same level of amenities as correct, as you mentioned, as far as in the master plan communities.
Okay, one other question that came out, I saw some, a written response, but I know that I had asked about in a conversation a couple of days ago, and that relates to what currently is in place. And so for Mather South and for New Bridge, there are negotiated agreements as a part of the either negotiating or through the approval process at the county and looking at the land use entitlements that currently apply for any development that would occur in those two developments.
Are you referring to the development agreements that have been entered into with those?
Right, where there's agreed upon fee for park purposes. Is that, is that accurate? Is there for both of those projects?
Yes, and I'll probably defer to the district staff as far as the details. However, the financing plans for both of those developments include the amount for what they can more accurately describe as far as the fee in the nexus study that was approved previously back in 2014. So the numbers that are supported in the financing plan are the, is the fee actually a higher fee? But then as far as the development agreement, I believe, and again too, actually, I'll let district staff handle that question. However, as far as the specifics, it would be the either or. If a fee program is approved, then that fee would be applicable to future development in that area.
Right, but as it stands now, with those two particular plan areas, new growth, there it's not like there's, there's an absence of an applicable fee. It happens to be the one, as you said, that related to a previous iteration of the nexus study and got built into the financing plans and currently is the fee that would be applied. In the event, and I guess my question is, and maybe this is for council as well, that in the event that we, the board took no action on this, that then those would continue to be valid agreements. Is that accurate?
Yes, those agreements would be, would still be valid as they're part of the planning entitlement process.
Yes, that's right.
That's accurate.
Okay, good. All right, good. That's, all right, that's my question for now. I probably may have others as we go along. I see Supervisor Desmond has a, has a hand up, so I'll go to Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, thank you Chair Natoli, and thank you Dorothy, I appreciate that. And I'm trying to understand the implications of those development agreements for Mather and New Bridge as well. So, and I appreciate you asking that question, Chair Natoli. So then we're just, we're talking about the other two developments that, that, the other two projects that don't have a development agreement in place currently. If if we don't take any action on this or, you know, rejected it, I appreciate the county council's, you know, response to the, to the email inquiry. It would be a matter of the park district then entering into a development agreement negotiation on this issue with those other two, with respect to those other two projects. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, that's right.
That's how it works.
Yep.
And I, and I just, just, and I will probably have a few more questions and, and Dorothy, I certainly appreciate staff. I mean, I know that my colleagues have been having discussions about this a lot longer than I have. I look at it really relatively uninitiated and trying to learn about this, but I look at it really from a competition standpoint and in the context of the larger discussion about fees. I think this has to be part of that discussion. And, and for me, maybe it's an oversimplistic thing, but when I, when I look at that, the fee comparison, and I appreciate Chair Natoli making the distinction between infill development and, and greenfield development, obviously that the fees are are higher in some of these greenfield development projects. But, but it does occur to me, and I brought this up the last couple of times this came to the board, is I know money that developers put, pay for trails is separate and distinct from parks. That doesn't have to do with a park district maintaining its, its facilities. But from the perspective of, I think, a home builder, it's still a cost to maintain an open space, you know, and amenity, right, recreational amenity. And it's still a cost. And I think it's, in this, this, this is the fee comparison chart Dorothy, right? It's in the, it's in the board items. I mean, and refresh my memory, what is the amount that they pay? I mean, I know it differs based on the project, but the average amount paid or that's included for the trails, maintenance of the trails for these projects, you know that off the top of your head?
Actually, we talked, I'm sorry, would you like a number for maintenance or for actual construction of trails? The construction of trails in the Jackson Corridor is running about 3,000, 3,400 as far as construction. And meanwhile, as far as, I don't have it off the top of my head, but there is a separate services amount for maintenance of the ongoing maintenance of the trails.
Okay, and I mean, but, but there is an additional cost per unit.
Yes.
For the trails as well, in addition to the parks. And I, and to me, that's something that, again, in the context of the larger fee discussion that we've been having and Bob presented to us in December and will continue those evaluations and I guess kind of a work group with BIA about this. You know, it does strike me as the building community, the ones we want to attract to come to Sacramento to do more business, you know, they're paying attention to this. They're paying attention to how concerned we are with doing what we can to lower fees. And so that's just, I just want to preface my comments with that. I mean, I never, in, in, I think it's been twice that we have, have delayed this, two or three times, twice, I guess, twice now. Oh, three times, three, oh my goodness. It's never, to me, it's never been, you know, a legal issue. I have great confidence in our county council and the council for the park district that we were on solid legal ground. It was more a matter of, from a, from a competition standpoint, is it, is there more we can do? And I will just say this, I know we're going to hear from the park district and I'd like to hear their response, but you know, I think each time we decided to delay this thing, there were some outstanding legal issues to evaluate. But I also think the board, at least, at least I did, has expressed my desire that the parties would sit down and see if they could work something out. And that's, you know, that's, I'm kind of lost with the impression here, you know, we're at the same place where we were when we heard this the first time. I'm left with the impression a little bit that have we been disregarded in expressing that, that desire that this be worked out? So, so I'd really like to hear from the park district about what efforts they have made since this board first heard this to try to come up with some, I guess, maybe a little bit of relief or at least engage with BIA to try to resolve this situation. So those are just kind of my, you know, initial comments.
Patrick, would you like to interject at this time? I see a square there.
Dorothy, before, before you do that, unless there's a direct response to Supervisor Desmond, I have a couple of, at least one of the member of the board that wants to weigh in too, but, but that's okay. But again, if it was in response to something that Supervisor Desmond asked about, I trust they're going to make a presentation, but, so I'll kind of leave that to you or to Patrick to decide that, but.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, okay, good.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I can answer your question in terms of what's been done since the last public hearing. I wanted to make sure that you felt heard and we did hear you. So what ended up happening since the last public hearing? CRPD staff brought to our CRPD Board of Directors an additional reduction, a 1% reduction in the administration fee and then a 2% reduction eliminating art in the parks component from the nexus study. Chris Norm from BIA did attend the board meeting and I did attach the update and the transcript from that meeting to a packet I delivered to the Board of Supervisors last Thursday. In essence, basically, the presentation went forward with keeping the spirit of, you know, negotiations and trying to get to an agreement. And it ended where the BIA felt it was not an appropriate enough reduction more than we've already reduced. So we have to be reminded about the fact that we started at $10,548, I believe, actually, $10,535 with our 2014 nexus study amount, which the city of Rancho Cordova side of our district actually still has in place. The proposal in front of you was for a reduction of $1,428, which is a 12.4 reduction in that fee that the district had prior to this body of work, which has actually taken eight years of full negotiations, community outreach, stakeholder meetings. So this was not something that, you know, wasn't negotiated well in advance. So we went forward with our board proposal. The board decided to take no action. They felt that the already reduced amount from the fee that we have at $10,500 was justified legally through the mitigation act, through the support of staff, our nexus study, Sacramento County staff. We felt that this reduction was a significant amount and we didn't want to continue to negatively impact the ability to build these parks. So what happens is on top of that already reduced amount by 12, 12.4%, it is also these increases in utility costs that are coming our way, which is making it even more difficult for us to add amenities to these parks, which we've already in essence reduced or eliminated with this plan. Some of the amenities we eliminated were an aquatic center, spray parks, we've eliminated gathering spaces, amphitheaters, which you would typically find with the fee at that higher rate, but we've had to eliminate that in order to reduce this down to the number of 9,107. And the BIA was a part of those negotiations and the part of that stakeholder outreach meetings along the way. So a further reduction was not something our CRPD board felt was appropriate and felt that the nexus study justified the fee that's going forward and it's fair and it's legal and it's something that we're hoping that the Board of Supervisors will consider so that we can actually take that money and go directly to those park developments. This is not a revenue stream for our district. This money goes directly to the development of those parks. The more and more we chip away. The more and more we chip away at that, the more we do not have amenities and equity amongst the park systems that are neighboring to this development. So that hopefully answers your question. We, we did extend the olive branch to the BIA since the last public hearing. We did have a CRPD board meeting. This was discussed. I submitted the transcript from that meeting in your packet that was delivered on Thursday of last week. And that's what we were able to do, so.
Thanks Patrick. Richard, do you have a follow-on question?
No, I think I, I might in, in a few moments. I appreciate that. Thank you Patrick.
All right. Supervisor Kennedy, you had your hand up. You still want to ask a question, or do you want to wait?
No, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Very good. Any other questions of Dorothy then, District? So Dorothy, was Bob going to make a separate presentation, or it was just you were tag teaming?
Correct, we were tag teaming and he would interject as necessary.
All right, you'll stand by then. So, okay, before we go to Patrick then and Bob Thurbin, let me ask Lisa Travis, Lisa, did you want to weigh in any further? I know you did some additional work, and it may be touched upon by the presentation by the District. I want to be clear.
I don't have any, I don't have anything specifically to add. As you know, we did, I think at least two rounds of legal analysis on this and feel confident that our opinion is supportable by the case law and statute. So unless the board has any specific questions, I will not have anything else to add.
Okay, good. All right, thanks Lisa. Okay, I did keep you with the order of presentation then, I guess Patrick, we turn back to you, Mr. Larkin, you had Bob Thurbin on behalf of District that wanted to make additional comments or presentations, and then we'll open it up for, for comments. We have also maybe have some callers on the line. I don't know that for certain, but, okay, let's go to you Patrick.
Okay, thank you. So just as in a summary, the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Impact Fee Proposal has been thoroughly researched, negotiated, and the NEXIS study justifies the fee to build new parks in the unincorporated Sacramento County area of CRPD. The Park Impact follows California Government Code as well as Sacramento County Code, so there is consistency with that. The NEXIS study and proposed Park Impact Fees is the result of an extensive eight-year process involving CRPD staff, Sacramento County staff, the BIA, and the development community. The CRPD Board of Directors, CRPD staff and Sacramento County staff supports the fee that has been negotiated down from the initial NEXIS study in 2014. The district's negotiated fee was lowered from the 2014 fee of $10,535.82 in 2021 value to 9,107.37 for single-family residents, a reduction of $1,428.45. This is a 12.4 reduction in the fee that we had established in 2014. The CRPD Board of Directors approved the Park Impact Fee for the unincorporated Sacramento County area of CRPD. This now demonstrates two separate fees for CRPD's park development jurisdiction with different levels of service. The reduced fee offers less amenities in the Sacramento County area of the district, and is significantly lower than the new Park Impact Fees in the city of Rancho Cordova. These are three important facts for the supervisors to consider. The fees are not connected to home prices, which are market-driven. Fees are not revenue to the district. Fees are about building quality equitable parks and spaces that enhance lives and property values for the new residents. We appreciate your thoughtful consideration in approving this fee, and we look forward to working with the Sacramento County staff and the developers in bringing equitable opportunities for parks in the new areas of development. Thank you for your time.
Thanks Patrick, appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Thurbin, was he going to supplement your comments, Patrick?
Bob is here. I, I'm not sure if he has anything to add. We did respond to the legal, you know, questions that the BIA had at the last public hearing, and I know Bob worked with County Council to respond, and that response has gone to the Board of Supervisors as well as the BIA, so that, that issue should be settled.
All right. Chair Natoli, I was just going to say thanks for the opportunity, but I concur with what Patrick just said, and I join Ms. Travis. I'm here to answer any specific questions any of the supervisors may have. But I think both legal teams, yours and the District's, have responded effectively in the documents that have been presented to you, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. All right, thanks Patrick, thanks Bob. Then we'll, at this point in time, I know there are probably other board members, questions or comments, but we may have folks from the, probably want to weigh in on this, interested parties. So Flo, do we have callers on this? We'll take, take the public comments, and then we'll bring them back to the board for discussion, questions, and deliberation.
Yes, sir. We do have some public comments, and I will ask a staff to transfer the caller now.
Okay, very good, thanks.
I think we have a couple of callers. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Bill Abbott, Abbott and Kinderman on behalf of North State BIA. And, and my comments really are, are focused on a fine edge in terms of the issues that are being discussed. I appreciate the feedback and review by County Council's Office and, and the District's Council. But nevertheless, I retain a, a different position. And the key point that I want to make is under the Quimby Act, and we're not suggesting there's a problem with the county's Quimby ordinance, but rather the application of the ordinance in this particular situation. The board has to determine what constitutes the existing neighborhood and community parks as of the last federal census. And we think that there are two errors. First of all, within the acreage that has been submitted by the district, it includes a closed gun range. This is a facility that is contaminated. The district has no adopted plans that we're aware of for rehabilitation. So we don't see any, I just, as a matter of interpretation, how can a closed facility that is, that cannot be open to the public constitute an existing neighborhood or community park? Our second point has to do with the inclusion of trails. Now, the representation has been made that trails are not included. And yet, the NEXIS study that you're going to approve, if you pass this ordinance, includes a table, and that table includes Trail Acreage. Now, what's significant, and the point we've tried to make, is that when the county exercises its land use powers, it has to act consistent with its general plan. There's been a 50-year trend in California land use law in that regard, and your general plan draws a distinction between trails and community and neighborhood parks. So we, we've heard that trails were not included, but the report that you're going to approve does include trails. So unless there's been an independent calculation, we still think that that flaw exists. So we're going to ask you to act consistent with your general plan in terms of determining what are the existing neighborhood and community parks. We ask you to consider whether or not a closed facility is an existing park, and I don't think there's any reasonable legal or factual interpretation that supports that. We think you also have the discretion to consider whether or not a, even if the gun range is considered to be a community park, whether or not it, it, it serves that function. Highly specialized, and at least in my mind, and I think there's certainly room for the board to reach its interpretation, as to whether or not that type of facility ever constitutes a neighborhood park or community park. Thank you for the time and for staffs in the District's consideration of our legal points. We think our objections still remain, and thank you for the opportunity to address you on this topic.
Thank you, Bill.
And we have one more caller. Please transfer the caller. We have, I don't have any calls coming in. I'm just speaking to staff. I didn't have anything come in on the line. So staff is going to call this person back, Chairperson Natoli, and when they get back on the line, I will let you know.
Okay, all right. So we're still maintaining the public hearing open. We'll come back to colleagues. I see, I see whether the Cerner has a hand up. Question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for our County Council. Mr. Abbott brought up a handful of points, presumably the same, the same arguments that he, that has been presented in, in writing and that you're probably familiar with, as well as the legal counsel for the, the district. But, and you may have said this before, Ms. Travis, but is there, is there a specific case law that can be cited when it comes to this whole question of using a closed gun range for the purposes of determining, you know, NEXIS? It, to me, that, that seems like such a unique circumstance. And I was wondering if there's any, anything that comes close that's happened in the past that supports the, the positions that your office and that of the District's legal counsel has presented?
Well, I'll try to answer your question. Of course, there's nothing specifically related to a gun range, because as you said, that's pretty specific, but there are analogous cases that address using closed facilities or things that aren't necessarily designated park. And those were outlined, I think, and distinguished in our memorandum that Mr. Parrish provided to you last week. So I would defer to Mr. Parrish and CRPD's council, as they're much more familiar with the specifics of the legal opinion. So if they have any, they want to add. But again, yes, we have reviewed the cases that are cited by the BIA, most notably the Boatworks case in Alameda County. And we feel that it's distinguishable in this instance. So I'll defer to my colleagues.
Right, Mrs. Rob Parrish, and of course, I work under Lisa, and I was specifically assigned to this. And the problem is, there really is no case law supporting the BIA's position. And, and in fairness, this issue would be sort of a matter of first impression if it came up to the courts. The county and the district just believe that the BIA is sort of reading this rather narrowly for the specific reason of excluding the acreage, which would then bring us below that 3.0 Quimby threshold. And we just don't think that their case law supports that reading. And given the, the county's general plan, its Quimby ordinance, and, and the NEXIS study provided by the district were all competently performed, we support this fee.
Thank you.
Bob, did you want to weigh in anything?
Yes, I would like to, I'll just weigh in briefly. The Boatworks case was problematic in that situation for those parties because the, the, through the planning process, a closed, two different closed, they were actually park and rep facilities that were actually closed at the time. And they were then slated to be funded with these specific fees that were at issue in that particular case. And that's why Supervisor Cerner, they run afoul of, of the situation with the Court of Appeal in that case. The Court of Appeal in that case made it very clear that its decision was narrow and limited only to the facts of that case. And it reserved judgment, as Mr. Perry says, for some future decision as to whether or not a quote "closed" facility can be counted in the overall park and, a park space and parkland that has to be developed and maintained and, and is owned by a public agency. I would also point out that the continued reference to this shooting range, because that is very unique, is a bit misleading. And it doesn't play in, in my view, into any of the analysis about whether we count this or don't count this. It's deed-restricted property that we own. The gun range or shooting facility was closed long ago. It's being repurposed, and it is deeded to the district and has to be used for park recreation purposes. And as such, it's properly calculated in our view. And I think County Council and my review of the situation, we yield the same result. So as Supervisor Desmond said, I think originally when, in his comments, there is not a legal issue in any of the attorney's views, and I, and I will submit that there, there is no legal issue as raised about that calculation.
Thank you.
All right, thanks to all. Okay, let's go back then for a moment. Do we have the caller online, Madam?
Yes. Were we able to get that? Yeah, go ahead and transfer the caller. Thank you. Hi caller, if you could mute the meeting in the background before you start talking, you have three minutes to make your comment. You can start.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, and you can start with your comments. Thank you.
Hi, this is Chris Norum from the North State BIA. I was somehow cut off. I called in earlier, sorry. I just want to reiterate that from a policy point of view, we have stressed the need to try to reduce fees. And the board has adopted a procedure where we're looking at a whole array of options in that regard. And so we feel like the process for looking at this, you know, should factor in, and that these fees are something that should be looked at carefully. The Mather South project, as many of you know from the last presentation we had, had fees in the neighborhood of $125,000 per unit. A lot of that property is slated for medium-density housing that the county wanted, but yet they're being charged the same exact high fee as a low-density house. The board had asked the Park District to reduce these fees at the last meeting, and they're presenting the same fee. You know, in response to Mr. Larkin's earlier comment about their, their 2014 fee, that was $10,500, adjusting for time and looking at that, at that time, I think that the average park fee in the region was five or $6,000. So they were proposing at that time a fee that was double the, the regional average. So to make the contention now that reducing it a little bit down to 9,000 is, is a major concession is something we would dispute. So I think that the, the board, you know, can act with its discretion to, to try to find ways to, to get the fee down lower, to be competitive, to factor in the, the overriding public consideration they have for trying to redevelop some of the, the property along that Jackson Corridor. And you've heard our legal arguments, but there's also strong policy cases here on just the cost of housing that we're trying to accomplish in partnership with the, with the region and with the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, any other callers, Madam?
At this time, we do not have any other callers, and I'll close the public comments.
Very good. All right, we'll bring it back to the board then. Supervisor Kennedy has hand up, and Desmond, down through the.
Thank you, Chair. I, I think like, I, I actually echo the same concerns that Supervisor Desmond brought up earlier. Mine are less of a legal nature than they are of just. Mine are less of a legal nature than they are of just the fact that I'm a little disappointed that we're in the same place as we were after hearing this three times. I, I just think that we have to recognize that we have a housing crisis in Sacramento, in California in general. And I think that some belt tightening needs to take place in order to make building homes feasible in the county. And, and also, I think we need to look, you know, turn to ourselves and, and look at ourselves. The, the, as, you know, Mr. Larkin has pointed out, our own fees to them have gone up significantly. And I think we need to look at our own fees for customers like the, the CRPD and, and really, you know, take a hard look at what we can do to make housing more feasible. So that, that, there's where my concerns lie. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick. Rich?
You know, no, I'm, I'm not going to make any further comment. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Well, again, I may outweigh this point. I don't know if Supervisor Frost or Sir, they want to make comments in a moment, but I just say that to the point made here, obviously, we've spent a good deal of time, as we should, on matters of import. And certainly, when we talk about fees of any type, they have impacts at the time that they're imposed, but certainly when it comes to fees that get passed on to either future homeowners or future property owners, obviously, they go as a part of the overall mortgage usually and the cost of, of, of the product, and whether it's a home or, or a building of other type, no, no question about it, it becomes a part of the debt, the debt service on that property. And, you know, as, as certainly as I've listened and, you know, spoken with the parties on this, and, you know, had an opportunity, obviously, over a lengthy period of time, going back to when, you know, some of this was actually proposed. And it wasn't just Cordova, Wreckin' Park District. There were other districts, including Southgate, that were a part of the fee discussion. In fact, the transportation development fees were a part of the ongoing discussion as now growth of some of the general plan discussions, but also the need to update some of those documents and, and take a look at the fee structures themselves. And so, you know, there's been a lot of work. And again, certainly I give credit to both the district and certainly to the industry and the representatives for their, I think, diligence and, you know, perseverance. But it's important. It's important not only to the cost, to the, the associated builders and development of the site, but it's important to the future homeowners and residents of these communities. And if I, and any one of us could, you know, travel this county, and you look at the amenities, whether they be parks or schools, obviously, facilities, libraries, and, and fire stations, the street infrastructure, the trails, all those things come at a cost. They don't come because somebody granted the money and then they just, they, they suddenly appear. But they require, obviously, initially fees in a lot of cases, but dedication of land, along with obviously the ongoing structure to maintain behind them. And I think that as a community, certainly as a county, working with our, our, you know, developing neighborhoods and business districts, and certainly with those that have existed going back, you know, decades and generations, that we've worked really hard to provide for amenities that reflect not only community values, but certainly the ability to pay for them, and to do it in a way that I believe looks at the cost of the initial cost of housing in these new development areas, but also, you know, land development costs and some of the things that were alluded to by a couple of my colleagues. And part of that is, is that, you know, the water, sewer, street drainage infrastructure, all of that, a lot of that's hidden to the, you know, the end purchaser, but they're important amenities. If they weren't there, obviously, not only the value in the property, but then the functionality is affected. And so I, I say all that because, again, as we look at the Jackson corridor, but we look at areas that are into the east, to the north, south, and west of, of the park district's area, you know, each of those districts, working, you know, whether they be within a city municipality or within a framework of the county, and with a special district that administers the development, in this case of, of parks and trails, those are important components. And as we look at trying to improve, you know, opportunities for affordability, but also when we look at the ability to accommodate the numbers of people that find Sacramento and its communities desirable place to, to live and want to, you know, make their home here, we take into consideration a lot of different factors. But in addition to the costs, both initial as well as the ongoing costs to be borne, I, I look at those amenities. And as I said, if you travel throughout, you see our, our parks, our community parks, the neighborhood parks, and you look at neighborhoods that, you know, are ones that have smaller footprints as relates to the entire, the lot themselves, but also then the house that's on them that occupies them a lot of the time doesn't allow for some of the backyard amenities, nor some of the other amenities might have come with, you know, a, a different build, a construct of, of, of a lot going back even, you know, a few decades ago. And so the, you know, I think the expectation is that, one, the parks will be in place, turnkey, and the people can use and enjoy them since they are going to pay for them either in their mortgage or in the ongoing CFDs that provide for, you know, maintenance and the stream of operations of funding. And so, again, as I've, I've looked at this, and I certainly have appreciated the, you know, the, the input that we received, it, it, it seems to me that this fee is in keeping with ones in adjacent areas. When I look at Southgate and certainly Casumis, those CSTs, we talked about the Folsom Plan area as well, that, you know, the, the parks will be there for as long as those neighbors are there. And it'll be the responsibility for as long as those neighbors, neighbors are there for the district, in this case, Cordova, but wherever it might be, to be the responsible entity for maintaining those parks, either through the revenue streams that are provided as part of the new development and/or through the, the general appropriations and revenues that a district receives. And I just think this, this is too critical of infrastructure to, you know, say, well, we can, you know, pick away at it. It wasn't us, the county, who did the Nexus study, but I believe that, you know, there's been a lot of work done around that. And, you know, the bottom line is, is that for quality neighborhoods, for the quality of life that people will, will enjoy, and obviously, it will be a cost that will be borne by those folks, but to have the schools, the parks, the trails, the other amenities like libraries and firehouses, all those things that become a part of the fabric of a newly developed community, it's important. And to have a sufficient revenue source to develop those facilities going in so that people don't wait a generation or two like they used to in some cases, because there wasn't a wherewithal, and there was a land education requirement, but there wasn't, you know, the funding stream via fee or some other method to actually provide for the development of those parks. And so, you know, I guess, speaking from experience here, I'm not insensitive to the costs. Obviously, it gets borne by not only the developer, if in fact they do build, but obviously pass on to the homeowner. But I believe the balance here is the quality amenities that go in those parks in expectation by new homeowners, knowing what that, you know, that will probably be the biggest investment any of them make, that they're hopefully going to raise their children and have their families and, 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 you know, put their roots down in these communities. And then having those parks and the ability to use them and access them, and to have those things that provide for different, you know, athletic endeavors, but also outlets for people's interests are really, really important. And I can't stress that enough, and that's not being argued here today, but I do believe that what's before us is, is on balance, you know, a fair approach and one that I'm prepared to support here today as we get into the discussion. So I'll just leave it there, and I don't have any particular questions. I guess turn to my colleagues. So Supervisor Frost?
I guess I'll chime in. I, I want to say I did meet with the parks, and I'm sensitive to, you know, their, their ongoing dilemma. It seems like parks, arts, music, those are the kinds of things that are often the icing on the cake, and they're the first thing to go when the money starts to shrink, and it's always hard. It's hard. And, and I, I'm very sensitive to some of their arguments around inflation and so forth. But I'm particularly, you know, one of the things that, that it seems like it's been an ongoing issue since the day I became a supervisor, and this kind of goes to Supervisor Kennedy's comments, is that the, the fees in Sacramento County are high, and we've constantly been trying to figure out what can we do to, you know, make these projects pencil and help these developers figure out how they can make it work. And without the rooftops, you don't have the parks anyway. And I guess that brings me to the question, which there, there was a lot of paperwork associated with this item, but someone asked the question, you know, well, what would happen if we continue and, and have, have that discussion around, with the park fees, you know, along with the overall continuing that discussion around what can we do to, to improve the situation with our fees and to maybe even lower our fees in Sacramento County? Would it be doable? I mean, could, could we do that? And could we work with the development community in that way that, to, to look at the whole picture and work with the whole picture rather than making the decision today?
I, I'll go ahead and, or partly address that since I believe it blends into our fees and feasibility effort. And actually, Mr. Davison, since that's his task, would like to directly answer that. So let me just step aside, and Bob will be joining in. Thanks.
Good af, whoops, good afternoon. So in, in response to the question of what, what, what would happen, first of all, we are going to embark on a fees and feasibility effort with the BIA to pinpoint areas where fees are high, wherever they are. And, and we want to pinpoint on the areas so that we're not just, we had a great fees, cost, and standards effort in the past. It was good, but it was definitely time consuming. It took a, a lot of everybody's time. And there's a lot of areas where, you know, things were analyzed, but not, not much benefit came from it. So, so by working with the BIA and focusing on these areas, you know, we hope that we will find savings in fees, whether the county fees or park fees. And today, whether you approve this item or not, parks are going to be looked at in this effort. So if, if, if this item is moved forward today, we're still going to sit down at the table, we're still going to look at park CIPs. And if meaningful reductions can be found, those will come back to the board. Approving the, the park fee today doesn't seal it in stone forever. It's, it's, the program can be revised. And honestly, a lot of staff effort went into bringing this today. A, a lot of that will be lost if, if this effort goes away. But if, if it's approved, it's a lot easier to adjust a fee than it is to just, you know, redo it from the start. So, 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 yes, parks will be part of that effort regardless of whether you approve this today or not.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Do you have anything else?
No, not, that's it for now.
Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. So as someone who has worked for a considerable amount of time in his previous life on, on this particular issue, having worked for a, a local BIA here in California a few decades ago. And as I think I've mentioned here before, the impact of fee loads, either cumulative fee loads for projects or individual fees for different purposes, different infrastructure needs or service needs, you know, those contributing costs have different impacts depending on the market when it comes to housing. In today's market, I would hazard a guess that even if we were to approve a lower fee than what could be collected based on our Nexus study, that will not find its way necessarily to a, a more affordable sales price. And that has everything to do with the shortage of housing, ironically enough. And if, if things were different, if it was more of a buyer's market, then we might see a competition do what we'd expect and have fees be more obvious in terms of its influence on the subsequent price level for housing. And I guess I'm a bit torn here because when we, as this board will recall, before we went on recess and as we took final action just this morning during consent on the Housing Trust Fund fee, regardless of that, that fee was one that, or is one that will be leveled against non-residential development. The board members, my colleagues will recall that the Nexus study for that particular fee told us that the, the county was well within its legal ability to charge significantly more than what we ultimately have now adopted. Somewhere in the neighborhood, if I recall correctly, it's something like, you know, $30 or $40 a square foot for some types of non-residential projects. As a matter of policy, I think this board did the right thing. We had a lively discussion about that particular fee, and we came to a conclusion that this is going to be an exercise in trying to balance the need, the need to fortify our Housing Trust Fund with the concern not to so overburden the cost of non-residential development that we might compromise, you know, economic development in general and certain types of non-residential development specifically. So it's certainly not foreign to this board for us to separate the two, the legal from the policy, and, and tackle this from the standpoint of balance. And so I, I find myself a bit torn because I certainly, as I stated earlier, I think I have a, a good grasp on what the influence for all cost components will have on housing based on general economic conditions. But at the same time, I, I do think that we are charged with finding, finding balance. So at this point, I, I guess, I, you know, I, I'm more concerned if I'm going to look at it from the standpoint of balance, I, I'm very concerned, I shouldn't say more, but I'm very concerned about the cost of housing. But again, I don't see that in this market, the, 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 the reduction in this fee is going to have the impact that we would, I think, all like to see, which is the reduction or corresponding reduction in home price. So I'm, I'm therefore, I think, more resigned to be aligned with the, the position expressed by Supervisor Natoli at this point.
All right. Any other comments by board members? When I jump again, I'm prepared to make a motion. And I would move the, again, acknowledging comments here, and I think the ongoing concerns about the impacts, but I'm prepared to move the staff.
Second.
Question? Or call for a vote?
Supervisors Frost?
This is difficult, but I'm going to say no.
Kennedy?
No.
Desmond?
No.
Serna?
Aye.
And Supervisor Natoli?
Aye.
And the motion fails.
Then, I guess I need to ask a question then. So again, if we take no action, basically that results in no action, then I guess it has impacts in the Jackson corridor. And I think that it leaves the district, I guess, with having to negotiate separate agreements with, and, and particularly those projects we see as part of our financing plan. So I think it's very unfortunate what we just did here today. So I'll just say it that way. Quality parks mean for a good quality of life, and I, again, I'm arriving on a conclusion, but I just think it's really unfortunate. So Lisa? Lisa, can I ask you before we leave this item? So at this point in time, board has basically rejected the item. Is there anything further there? Just it just?
Yeah, at this point, there's nothing further on this item. Of course, the district is welcome to try a different fee if they redo the Nexus study. But as you mentioned, they'll just have to negotiate individual development agreements with each new development as it comes through.
And it could be clear, we see those though, as a part of our, in the two previous developments that when they come before us and we've got, you know, two pending and maybe others that will come over time. So before our board takes action, those are embedded in the overall review of fees, infrastructure and so forth. Is that accurate?
That's correct. Yes.
And in the case of Baser South and New Bridge, we had seen this, seen the actually higher fee and given approval to it as part of our board entitlement package. Is that accurate?
I believe that's correct, if I'm remembering right. Yep.
All right. Could I make one suggestion? There is an agreement that's before you that's relatively minor, given the whole discussion here today, but I would ask that your board approve that agreement. It just allows some minor county cost recovery that we've spent on this item.
That was fifteen thousand dollars recovery of fifteen thousand dollars, Bob?
Right.
I was going to say you would have to take a separate motion on that recommendation.
That's the advanced funding costs, item number six.
Yep.
Correct.
Of the overall staff recommendation. I guess I did see there's the objection by those that proposed the previous motion. If they're okay for carving that out, I'm prepared to move that piece.
Second.
Okay, moving second to that then, on the staff recommendation recommendation, item number six, which is the adoption of the resolution two to authorize the amendment to the agreement for advanced funding of costs for imposing a park development fee for the recreation park district. It doesn't affect any of the outcomes related to the previous motion, but it would allow recovery of, I guess, a few thousand dollars, Bob?
Five thousand dollars extra.
Five thousand dollars. All right, that's the motion. We have a second. More discussion?
Second.
All right, nothing further. Please call roll.
Supervisors Frost?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Desmond?
Aye.
Serna?
Aye.
Natoli?
Aye.
A unanimous vote. And that's for recommendation number six related to that resolution for the amendment to the agreement.
All right, thank you all.
Are you ready for your next item, Chairman?
Yes, we'll move to the next one.
Okay, for item fifty-five, this is request to approve the Department of Health Services Assisted Outpatient Treatment Implementation Plan and authority to operationalize the assisted outpatient treatment program. Approve an administrative salary resolution amendment adding nine full-time equivalent positions. Authority to allocate fifty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars for the purchase of two vehicles for the assisted outpatient treatment program and approve and appropriations adjustment request in the amount of three million four hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Okay, then we have our presenters. Siobhan, you and Ryan are up on this one as well.
Yes, thank you so much. Siobhan Qatari, Department of Health Services. I just wanted to just open the item by giving a thanks to my team. And I'm excited to bring this assisted outpatient treatment. Formerly, you would know it as Laura's Law Back to the Board for an Implementation Plan. The team's done a tremendous amount of work to gather community input and to ensure that we're listening to all the voices in the community. And we'll continue to do that work as this unfolds to make sure that we're really reaching out to those who are most impacted and taking their voices into consideration. I also wanted to just mention that today we have Judge Lawrence Brown from the Sacramento County Superior Courts, as well as Amanda Benson, who is our public defender, available to answer any questions in their realms, because this is a multidisciplinary collaborative approach to this program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Quist for the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Siobhan. Good afternoon, Chair and board members. Ryan Quist, Sacramento County Behavioral Health Director. Next slide, please. So quick background, assisted outpatient treatment, also known as Laura's Law, was passed into California Legislature in two thousand and two. So allows court-ordered outpatient treatment for individuals with mental illness who meet limited legal criteria. And we'll go over those criteria a little bit more, a little bit later in the presentation. I'm going to modify my presentation just a little bit here because I had the opportunity to see some of the public comment that has been coming in on this topic that you all have seen. So I want to give a little bit more context. Prior to bringing this AOT recommendation to the board back in May, we had a series of conversations within the community. And it was very apparent that we had some very committed and passionate stakeholders within the community on both sides of the issue. And so it was a very difficult process by which we came to the conclusion that we were recommending that we would implement AOT. At that time, in May, we brought before the board the recommendation to implement, but we also said we wanted to go back and work with the folks who had concerns about AOT to address their concerns and find strategies to address their concerns. And so this particular presentation and board letter was intended to both follow up that that process of reporting back how we engaged with folks who were concerned about AOT and how we were planning on addressing their concerns. And so the presentation focus was on that. And since then, we've heard some concern that it wasn't clear that we were going to be implementing AOT consistent with how AOT should be implemented. And that is our intention. We do plan on working with our courts and working with the legal system in order to do just that. So I wanted to give that little bit of context because the slides themselves are going to be a little bit more emphasizing the portion of the content regarding how we're addressing concerns from those who are against AOT. So in May, unanimously, the board of supervisors did recommend implementation. Since then, we had a community planning forum to address the concerns of the opponents. That was in August. And subsequently, this last bullet's a little bit misleading. In October, though, the mental health board made recommendations about strategies to address the concerns of the AOT opponents. So next slide, please. So now we're going to go over what those strategies are. The main areas of concern first begins with ensuring equity among those who are being, for those being served in the program. And so strategies identified would be that we recruit and hire staff that are reflective of Sacramento County's racial, ethnic and gender diversity. That we would include implicit bias and equity training for staff, our system partners and the community. And that we would watch the data to identify potential disparities in how the program was being implemented. The second area of concern was around the criminalization, stigmatization of mental illness. And so one of the strategies that was identified by stakeholders was relentless engagement methods in order to encourage voluntary participation in services. They wanted to see peers with lived experience as a part of the AOT team. And then also wanted to make sure that family and other supports were included at all stages of the program. Next slide, please. They also recommended that we address training, which would be ongoing education and training for staff, family, community members and their support persons. We plan, we need to develop those education and training materials and consultation with DHCS, consumers, family members and advocacy organization. And we intend to do that. And it is part of the actual Laura's Law language that we need to submit that information to DHCS. Some of the topics that were recommended by those concerned were making sure that our trainings included trauma-informed care, cultural competency, implicit bias, suicide prevention and recovery-oriented services. And then, of course, we'll also be training on the actual AOT process to make sure that we're following all the rules that are in the law. Next slide, please. So here's an AOT eligibility criteria. This is an abbreviated version, but it gives you sort of the gist of it. Individuals must have a serious mental illness and a history of either psychiatric hospitalization, psychiatric hospitalizations, jail encounters, or acts, threats or attempts of serious violent behavior towards themselves or others. They must be offered voluntary treatment within the past ten days. And then the county mental health director and/or his or her designee may file a court petition to request AOT. And the consumer has a right to a defender appointed by the court. And the judge determines if the consumer meets the criteria, may grant AOT services for up to one hundred and eighty days with a potential extension at the end of that one hundred and eighty days. Next slide, please. So our proposal that's before you includes two pieces for a total amount of about three point five million dollars in the budget. We propose creating two mobile teams that would be county employees that would be responsible for going out and engaging with individuals and assessing them and identifying whether they linking them to services when possible, as well as identifying when it was time for them to be referred into AOT. This includes peer specialists with lived experience, licensed clinicians. We also have resources for data collection, analysis and training and education. This is a partnership with our partners in the court. So it includes the Superior Court. It includes county council who will be filing the petitions on the behalf of the behavioral health director or his or her designee. And then our public defender who will represent those for whom petitions are filed. Next slide, please. So the first part I just talked about was the staff that would be needed for going out, engaging with their county staff that would go out and engage with consumers and link or do the assessment for eligibility for the program. Once individuals are identified as eligible for the program, we would like to have them referred to a community-based organization that is following a full-service partnership or assertive community treatment, sort of a model. This is consistent with our other full-service partnership programs, which are intended to do the full wraparound services, which is consistent with the doing whatever it takes, sort of an approach. So we would like to release a competitive RFA in order to identify a CBO to do that work. Once that's completed, we also, while that's probably, while that's being completed, we're also going to be starting to develop training and education. We continue to have ongoing collaborative conversations with community and continue to set feedback and incorporate that feedback into our implementation. So we've been inviting the mental health board to continue holding ongoing meetings with family, consumer and advocacy partners regarding the implementation and outcomes. There are requirements for us to work with DHCS. And of course, we plan on following those requirements for reporting and developing training and technical assistance plans for how we will continue to support this program. Next slide, please. So now we do, the board action that we brought before you recommends approval of this AOT implementation plan and the authority to operationalize this program and implement. I think that's my last slide. Thank you.
Don, you're on mute.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. I just want to say thank you to Ryan. And I know we have several hands up on this. And I wanted to thank Judge Brown for being with us today as well, and certainly Amanda Benson. But we'll go to colleagues, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair and Natoli. Thank you, Dr. Quist and Siobhan. Appreciate the presentation and all your work. And Ryan, you know, I appreciate you addressing that issue about your engagement with some of the opponents. You know, I will tell you, when I first read it, the staff report, it just, it occurred to me that, you know, we're engaging the opponents. And that just seemed, they need to be part of the discussion. But I'm a little worried that if they're opposing this whole program, will they push back? Will they try to put things in place that will affect its ultimate effectiveness? And so I'm glad you addressed that. I mean, I think it's certainly, I love the areas you identified that you're focusing on, the equity, the decriminalization, the stigmatization, the training. A question I have for you in terms of your, because I heard from a couple of people about this, including some folks involved with NAMI. Was NAMI involved in any of the discussions about this, developing this plan?
I don't know if I can speak with a hundred percent confidence on that. I believe that some of the folks that were providing feedback are members of NAMI. NAMI?
Not as a group, got it. Because I was just looking at one of the groups you specifically mentioned here. Not only did they oppose it, they oppose Laura's Law in Sacramento County, but they were actively involved in opposing the legislation that established Laura's Law in the first place. So, you know, that just was a concern of mine, but thank you for addressing it. And I'm confident that you've got definitely a balanced approach. In terms of the ideas to set this up, did you, can you maybe discuss a little bit about maybe other counties and what some other, in your opinion, some of the best practices in other counties, maybe Santa Clara, other counties? And how does your proposal track with some of those other plans in those counties?
Great, thank you. Yes, as when this new law came out where instead of counties opting in to assisted outpatient treatment, that now counties have to either opt out or implement, you can imagine that all behavioral health directors across the state at that point were either opted in already or having to go through that same conversation. So we actually had through our County Behavioral Health Directors Association, a few, a series of discussions to share best practices across counties. And so definitely brought notes back from all those different conversations. And I also want to, I guess, highlight that Judge Brown has also had interactions with our colleagues in Nevada County, which was the original county where AOT first initiated. So we are definitely having those collaborative conversations with our colleagues around the state.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Quist. And I appreciate that. You know, my hope is, I'm very, I'm proud that the board adopted this unanimously. And really, I hope that we'll get the most benefit out of this program by not having to utilize it, right? By trying to get voluntary enrollment in programs and assistance that folks need just with the notion that this is out there as kind of a last resort, right? One other question, I think, maybe, I don't know if this is for Siobhan or whoever, but as I was reading your description of the mobile teams, which sounds great, will there be any discussion about integrating those mobile teams with any of our crisis response system that I know that you're currently evaluating and developing right now?
Yeah, we've been having lots of conversations around how all these new programs all need to integrate with one another and continue to refer to whatever the best resource is to help that individual in the moment. So we're definitely having some good conversations and thought around that. What exactly that looks like we continue to develop?
Great. I get to see them doing a lot of the same work, you know, at times. So I think there's probably some opportunities there. And then the last question I had, and again, this relates back to Siobhan, a email you sent me. I had a question for our county exec yesterday about why we're not using MHSA funds to fund some of our AOT programming. And would you mind, Siobhan, just describing a little more detail? And would you mind, Siobhan, just describing a little more detail why that is?
Yeah, no, happy to do that. So, you know, the Mental Health Services Act dollars require us to go through pretty significant stakeholder and community planning process in order to write plans and then subsequently spend those dollars. So in going through this planning process with our, with our community groups, as well as with our MHSA steering committee, they voted at this time not to use MHSA dollars to fund AOT. One of the things that we did explore based on the board's question earlier on to us is whether or not MHSA dollars were allowable for this and they are allowable for this. And at some point, we will absolutely be revisiting what dollars we can use to sustain this program. MHSA may be a very, a good resource, but at this time, we're going to treat this first year and two as a pilot. See what kind of outcomes we get before we bring that back to the stakeholder process, but that is, that is what I shared. Ryan, did you want to add to that or did I cover it?
And I think there was also a question previously around how other counties are funding it. And so I just wanted to report back that I did look into that and that there, it's, it's a lot of different methods. So some of them are using general funds, some of them are using MHSA funds, some of them are using behavioral health realignment funds. And so in this proposal that we're bringing forward, we're proposing that we would use behavioral health realignment funds.
Great. All right. Well, I appreciate both those comments. Appreciate all your work on this and thank you as well, Judge Brown.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair and good to see you, Judge. It's been, been a while. I guess, while I understand that this is a report about the importance and the critical need to make sure that we continue to respond to community concerns about AOT implementation, despite the fact the board obviously acted the way we did last spring to unanimously adopt it. And at that time, we'll, we'll all recall, we heard the pros and cons and we heard from advocates and support. We heard of from mental health consumers and others that had concerns and I think continue to have various concerns. I myself worked with the B's editorial board to submit a post-adoption editorial about the county's interest in AOT and that was accompanied by both a pro and a con perspective about it from other authors. I guess what I'm, I'm interested in, in understanding, and I know it's really not the subject of this report, Dr. Quist, but you know, there's been even since May, a lot of progress, I think, between, especially between the city and the county on how best to maximize the value of what we can both bring to the common interest of addressing homelessness and, and the complexity, the complexities of, of that. Much of it has to do with mental health and and addiction issues for some of the most chronic cases of folks that are, you know, continuing to suffer for being unsheltered on, on our, in our incorporated areas and unincorporated areas. But I guess I'd like to understand that along with how are we engaging with folks that continue to have concerns about AOT? What have we done since May and what are we doing moving forward? To be very deliberate about making sure AOT is, is used responsibly with eye towards certainly, you know, protecting people's civil liberties. But at the same time, offering it as a very prominent tool in some instances for, for those that are populating, you know, various encampments across the city and the county that continue to battle with mental health needs. And certainly not to suggest that we go hunt for, for folks, but that we, you know, work collaboratively, especially with family members to, to, you know, find folks that are living on the streets and the banks of our rivers and under our overpasses that have kind of exhausted what tools, you know, we've brought to bear on trying to help them when it comes to mental health. And because this is such a new tool in our toolbox, I guess I'd like to understand how has it been incorporated to date in terms of our broader efforts to collectively address homelessness?
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. We have been having quite a few conversations with different partners within the community who are aware that AOT is being discussed and working on getting implemented. And so we've been fielding questions with them, sort of identifying, you know, adding them to our list of potential referral sources and sort of socializing it already to some extent. And then the other component I'll say is that some of the feedback we did get was the importance, importance around how we would market the program and make sure that the community was aware of what, what, what was available, what were the rules? Who would be most appropriate for referral? And so we've been continuing to have those conversations around how we will plan on taking that feedback and helping advise us regarding the marketing of the, of the program into the future. I think right now our biggest, I think right now, based on what the community is having conversations with us about is that we, they want to see the program soon. And so it was important for us to bring this letter before you in order to begin the process of actually implementing.
Is it, this is kind of a question slash suggestion for both you and, and Ms. Edwards, but is it possible that by the timeframe of a year anniversary of having adopted AOT, then the May-June timeframe that we might get a very specific update scheduled in open session around AOT's implementation in the context of, you know, our continuum of care for homelessness and how that's been used a year after and what kind of where we're going. A more, I guess a more refined discussion and presentation on it.
Just to make sure that I understand. So our next steps are that we're going to go through an RFA process. And so we're going to very aggressively try to implement the program with a goal of being able to be up and running by July 1st. That is an aggressive goal though, to be up and running by July 1st. Would it be May of the following year or?
Well, I just, it seems like there's just been so much activity, especially with regard partnership with the City of Sacramento. And I understand we're still in the phase of ramping up AOT. But I'm, I'm kind of starting to feel the, the interest bearing down, especially from those that really advocated hard for its adoption because of the increasing visibility of homelessness that I think it's, you know, we shouldn't wait to, to have it fully implemented, fully, I guess, you know, operationalized and we shouldn't wait for that to let the community know how it's going to be used, I guess. This is great. This has been a presentation today and a discussion today about engagement kind of internal to AOT, you know, to those that have been more critical or, or had their legitimate concerns. But what has been left kind of at least unaddressed or unanswered, at least in my opinion, is just how, how it's going to be used and what the expectation should be moving forward for folks that want to see it implemented with the express purposes of making some progress, getting people off our streets and out of those encampments.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will just add Supervisor Serna, I think we could be ready to come back with a presentation after having some more conversations with Bruce and, and Department of Human Assistance, Department of Homeless Initiatives about how this tool can leverage some of the other activities we have going on in the homeless space. And so we will do that and then we can be prepared to discuss that back in May or June.
I was just going to add the same thing, Siobhan Supervisor. I think we can definitely provide an update and how that's rolling out for the board in that rough timeframe. And we'll keep you posted on that, but I think that is a good suggestion.
Great, thank you.
All right. Just before I go to Supervisor Frost, we need to do a little agenda management. We're at 1:15. I trust we're going to go for a bit longer on this. I don't know, we may have public call-ins. We had an 11 o'clock item. I would say we'll probably take a break if it's amenable to the board members. Take a 20 or 30 minute break between this item and then picking up item 56 and finishing out the afternoon agenda. Does that sound reasonable, folks? Okay, board members, you okay with that? Okay. All right. So just for the, as I know, we have some presenters on item 56, so we'll take that up right after the break. It'll probably be close to 2 o'clock or thereabouts, but it may be a little bit after, but we'll take us up. We'll continue the numerical order. I just wanted to call for a break here. I know it's been four hours nearly in front of the screen here for all of us and clerk obviously having to manage us, so.
Chairperson, chairperson, may I interrupt? Out of respect, we do have at least eight callers on, on hold waiting to be, waiting to make a public comment.
No, on this item. Yeah, I'm not cutting this item off the floor. I'm talking about the item, next item following, so.
And I understand. It's just, I was just saying that it may be longer than two because of the eight callers and at three minutes a person. Okay.
Okay, good. So anyway, item 56 is going to be after we take a break. So whenever we finish item 55, conclude item 55, we'll take a break and we'll come back starting at item 56. So it may be after 2 o'clock before we get done with this item. So, very good. Okay, very good. Okay. All right. Sorry for that, but go to Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, Chair Nativoli. First, I wanted to say quickly, Dr. Quist, Siobhan, the Mental Health Board, Judge Brown, thank you for the public process and all the work and making sure everyone was comfortable with AOT. I know we were all excited with that unanimous vote and I'm excited with what you've finalized here or to this point. And I also want to say that I'm, I'm recently met Judge Brown and am excited that's an individual of his caliber will be working with these people because he's got a, he has a good heart and I think he will be, I know he will be the right person for these individuals who are in this position. And there, first I wanted to say there were some, there was a letter that we received in our packet. It was one of the comments and there were some family advocates for the AOT. And I know we've been, we've had this long public process trying to, you know, working with those who had concerns about AOT. But they listed some questions that they had and I wonder if it's okay if I just quickly address those questions that they asked. And the first question is what services will fund, will full-service partnerships include? And how will they be tailored to meet the individual needs of participants? What besides assertive community treatment will be available to AOT participants?
FSP and ACT are both basically do whatever it takes sort of a model. So by definition, they are designed around the individual, individual's needs. So it includes case management. Therapy includes medication management, psychiatry, whatever it takes in order to help support them. We have housing supports in there, I believe. So it's, it's whatever it takes in order to support that in each individual.
So how will behavioral health services staff be organized to coordinate and provide outreach to potential participants with SMI?
So the
for the public serious mental illness?
Our, we're, in our proposal, we have county staff who will be hired to be the ones that are going out mobily into the field to assess, link, engage with individuals out in the community. And when it, when appropriate, they would be the ones that would be identifying individuals who need to be referred through the court process in order to become a part of the AOT program.
Or they could be, it could be someone who reported in, who, who they responded to. Okay. And what responsibilities will the contracted agency staff have for program implementation? Will they be involved with outreach as well as direct services? How will they interact with the behavioral health staff or AOT staff?
Under our current model, what we're proposing is that the contracted staff will be most responsible for the service delivery. So providing those full-service programs and the ACT model, providing all the therapy, case management, psychiatry, medication management, that they'll be the ones that are really supporting the individuals through the course of their treatment.
Okay. And how will administrators ensure that the personnel implementing the plan are supportive of AOT? And its potential for helping AOT participants? That was an important one.
That, that's going to be part of the interview process and as a part of the RFP process and as a part of the hiring process for the contract provider. You're right. What, we've decided we are going to implement this and so we're going to do it well. That's, that's sort of the way we do things, right? Once we do, when we do a program, we're going to do it well. So it's going to be definitely a part of that recruitment and hiring process that we, we make sure that we identify the right teams to make this a successful program.
So in the last question they had, and this touched on something that I had in mind also. It's not entirely clear in the plan who will be responsible for evaluating the effectiveness of the AOT in Sacramento County, since many counties contract for this function. Will such, such a contract be solicited or will internal staff be professionally responsible for data collection and program evaluation as required annually by Laura's Law? And then to my, I think to Supervisor Serna's, I think he brought that up. Could we get and some either core annual update or updates to let us know how it's going? So that was kind of a big mouthful, but.
Fair. Yeah, we have an internal group, research, evaluation and program outcomes that are specialized in those types of activities and do that for a number of our other programs, including our MHSA programs and other grants that we have. So they, that they will definitely be collecting those data and we will be following the required reporting that DHCS is also outlined. So we will be able to report back on those outcomes and we'll intend to do so.
Okay, thank you. And then I just wanted to ask you, what date will this go into effect?
We're, we're making a very aggressive goal of trying to be live by July 1st.
And well, this is, it doesn't seem like 100 people is very many. So is this only 100 people or can we go beyond 100 with this? I mean, I guess we have to see how it goes, but hopefully there's potential to grow it as it's working well. That's my, that's my hope. Thank you, Dr. Quist, and those are all the questions I have at this time.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Ryan, just to the correspondence, Supervisor Frost went through and pulled out, extracted some questions on one, we received several pieces of correspondence, some of that dated today. I think it's important again, you know, maybe the questions are all in keeping what you've already addressed in the staff report, but there were some additional, they follow on both by advocates as well as those who cite ongoing concerns. And so I know you take those into account, but I think it would be important to look through that correspondence that came to the board this morning. And if at all possible, respond to folks, do some of that on the record already, but I just think that important aspects of what you're proposing to roll out here were being addressed in the correspondence. All right. Any other board member comments or questions at this point in time? If not, then we have a number of speakers on the callers on the phone. So with that, Judge Brown, did you want to add anything before I went to the public testimony? Because I, again, you've been very patient and I know your time is valuable, so.
Chair Nativoli members, thank you. And no, in fact, I have one of my three mental health treatment courts coming up in about five minutes. And I just want to say that certainly our court and I just want to say that certainly our court myself, we're at the ready to help with our piece of this, which I'm told is kind of just basically the black robe effect to help folks get some insights into their needs for mental health treatment. And I would just commend Director Katar and also Dr. Quist and the team for holding these listening sessions and the planning that's happened so far, so I just, I stand at the ready, and I appreciate being here today.
Thank you, Judge Brown, for all your leadership and good work, and again, you're going to go from one hearing mic to the next, so we appreciate you very much, thanks, okay. All right, with that, then we'll go into our public testimony, so Flo, I'll turn to you, and we said you had eight callers on hold, so we'll move through those and hear from folks.
Thank you, sir. Please transfer the first caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Lois Lufborough. First, I would like to say I appreciate Supervisor Cernas' comments on MHSA accountability. Thank you. Several years ago, I listened to a Santa Barbara Board of Supervisors meeting to hear updates concerning, at that time, their AOT pilot program. After hearing the AOT presenter speak about their intense, intensive outreach and clients volunteering for services, a supervisor inquired why they weren't utilizing the judicial side of AOT. The supervisor pointed out they've allocated funds and created positions for that very reason. The answer was their clients were transient, couldn't locate them, and they had moved, and a few other reasons. A Santa Barbara AOT advocate who remembers that meeting states, emphasizing outreach and volunteering has been successful in bringing 50% into treatment in our county, but we are losing the other 50% who are the most resistant to treatment. After reading the recommendations for Sacramento AOT, the emphasis is on volunteering for mental health services, which we already have, and utilizing the judicial aspect as least as possible. My concern is that you'll infuse $3 to $4 million in what could be a glorified ACT program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Mary Ann Bernard, a county resident and retired lawyer who had mental hospitals for clients in another state years ago, and so I'm familiar with the Laura's Law eligible population. That is dangerous severely mentally ill treatment refuses who will not volunteer for treatment because they are certain they are not sick. Now, you, the board, voted unanimously for Laura's Law, knowing that it has a potentially involuntary aspect because your voting statement said so, but based on their written plan, and I understand you may be hearing something differently, although I'm not following the meeting, I'm getting texts about it, but based on their written plan, your staff appears poised to switch Laura's Law to a voluntary program, which is not what you told them to do and which will not work. Most specifically, the offending language is found at page five of their plan, which equates AOT, that is Laura's Law, with ACT and FSPs, both of which are purely voluntary programs. Critical to Laura's Law is a court order, and I understand Sac County Judge Brown is very good at this sort of thing. The court order allows treatment personnel to give a deteriorating severely mentally ill client a choice before they become dangerous again. Either go back on your treatment plan, go back on your meds, or go into a hospital for a three-day evaluation, which does not include anything resembling force medication. So you will be safe, and the experts there can help you best. Most Laura's Law clients don't get to this point, but most of those who do choose treatment, and they choose it before they again become irrational and so dangerous that they are in no place to be able to accept it. For this population, their only other choice is a life of pure misery on the streets punctuated with repeated forced hospitalizations and force medication, or jail and force medication, or early death, often from suicide or from illnesses they have also ignored or by cops, because this population is five times more likely to face force from police than any other. This population has no voice except for family groups because they are too sick to have a voice. The voice of the mildly mentally ill, in contrast, is law, is loud and bitterly opposed. So some counties are doing fake AOT because they are listening to those loud voices. Please don't follow those counties. Please do not approve this plan as written, which is what you will do if you pass the motion that has been submitted, no matter what you are hearing. Make the behavioral health staff amend this plan so that they are following the law, meaning following Laura's Law and your previous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernard. Hey, next caller.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you. This is Elizabeth Kyno Hopper. I live in District 3, and I'm also a volunteer with NAMI, although today I'm only speaking from my personal comments. I also, because I'm so involved with NAMI, I do want to make sure to put out that NAMI Sacramento has basically had individuals that take different positions on AOT, and at the same time, NAMI Sacramento has not been opposed to AOT. If anything, they say that's another tool to get a person into treatment. Today, my main concern that I also have written in has to do with the court involvement, and just a reminder that I have a family member who would right now meet the criteria, and in order, in order for her to actually stay in the program, she would absolutely need the court order, even if she volunteered. She may say, as FSP and ACT were doing whatever it took to get her engaged, she may decide to promise anything. And that's where I believe that that court order at that point, which does meet the legal criteria of AOT, which I did hear Dr. Quist reassure us, will be implemented, and I thank him for that. But that, that was one of my main points to make today. Also, another concern when, when, including in the implicit bias training, I would also hope that there would be an element of family sensitivities. I've had opportunity to work with FSPs in Sac County where inadvertently the person working with my family member and/or me had held an attitude that family must have done something wrong, otherwise the person would have been in treatment longer. So just has that be included as part of the implicit bias, bias training. The other thing I'm not clear on is, there seems to be a clause in the documentation provided about conflict of interest waiver. I don't understand that. I bring that up because it would seem like if you're going to be hired, you shouldn't have a conflict of interest in any part of the AOT program. Mostly, I really appreciate all the supervisors, I appreciate Frost for reading out the concerns. My name is on that letter also, and, and I do appreciate the concern about how this can help with homelessness. My daughter is homeless at the moment. I believe this is one of the main avenues where she would be able to get re-engaged in treatment after over 10 year, over 10 years of attempting to get in and stay in the treatment. Family beds are beds, and I hope that Sacramento County finds a way to count us because we can be very instrumental in getting people off the streets if we're counted as beds and giving support services also. Thank you again for all your time. I'm thrilled that you've passed AOT, and I look forward to implementation. Bye.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Nancy Brimelson, and I am one of the family members referred to in the letter that you received. We applaud the Board of Supervisors for voting last May to approve the implementation of assisted outpatient treatment, and we're very encouraged that there is an acknowledgement of the role of family in the lives of individuals with serious mental illness. There are a number of places where that is mentioned within the plan. We view ourselves as system partners, and we not only want to be involved in every stage when one of our family members is referred for AOT, we also want to continue to be involved in planning. There are some specific issues that we think we have particular insight for, and, and we think that technical assistance or the, the training that will be done for the behavioral health services staff as well as the Full Service Partnership Agency. First, assessing the needs of individuals with SMI, and, and a very delicate point when the determination is made, when decompensation is such, or the potential for decompensation is such, that the individual needs to be referred either for AOT or 5150. Another important area that we've not talked much about is anosognosia. It's a big word for lack of insight into one's condition. If you had lived in our homes, you would understand that all of the attempts to reason with our family members about their state is just not comprehended, and so that's another piece that we feel we can be helpful in supplying. Yes, we did feel the written plan acknowledged more of the opponent's point of view rather than our point of view. We're very glad that that's been acknowledged by several speakers here today, the Supervisor Desmond and Supervisor Frost. We look forward to working with the county, with everyone in the county. We're very happy that this is moving forward. We need to ensure that access to treatment for people who are too ill to seek it on their own. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, for your comments. Okay, next caller.
Please send the next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Wade Brennelson. I'm the co-chair, along with my wife, who you just heard from, of a 12-person family advocates for AOT in Sacramento County, and we sent the letter that includes the names of all of our advocates to you, and we appreciate Supervisor Frost reading several sections from our letter. I would just like to say that with respect to the first point, the plan addresses the concerns of those who oppose AOT, as Dr. Quist said, rather than the views of those of us who support AOT or the needs of individuals who are severely mentally ill, whom we believe have not been satisfactorily served by the current Sacramento County Behavioral Health System. And that goes to our first point, and I would just mention about the plan focus, some AOT advocates, or opponents, rather, have asserted that AOT is not needed since participants with serious mental illness could use FSPs or full-service partnerships just like other mentally ill folks. However, given their lack of success with previous services from the county, including FSPs, and the need for individualization as required by the law, the FSP or full-service partnership part of this plan is suspect. And so I think we all need to look very carefully about what's happening with the programming. The second major area is judicial involvement, and thanks to Judge Brown for being there today. He's been a wonderful supporter of the mentally ill. The plan, unfortunately, incorrectly assumes that the judicial involvement with AOT clients is undesirable. The plan on page two promises to quote, "Use strategies to make sure that the court involvement happens as infrequently as possible," unquote. The plan also states that only 25% of those referred are anticipated to be subject to a court petition and involved with the AOT judge. We alternatively see it, based on Judge Brown's experience and demeanor, that we're very pleased that he's going to be the court judge as planned. The AOT literature, which is nationwide, frequently cites the power of the black robe effect to encourage individuals with serious mental illness to engage with their treatment, so that rather than discouraging court involvement, the plan should be amended to recognize the value of court involvement and not discourage its use. A third point has to do with some family member concerns, and I think my wife mentioned those to you, and a fourth one with technical assistance. The plan doesn't identify sources of technical assistance for the program. We recommend that you incorporate advice from the Treatment Advocacy Center, which is an advisory organization in Washington DC that's been involved with this since the first AOT program in New York State, and that this should be part of the plan. We've recommended this to Dr. Quist and others. The name of the document that we're recommending is called Implementing Outpatient Treatment: Essential Elements, Building Blocks, and Tips for Maximizing Results. Also, the policy director from the Technical Assistance Commission, Brian Stettin, has offered his services to assist in AOT implementation here in Sacramento County, and I think we should take him up on that. So thank you very much.
Wade, thank you. I just, I didn't want to cut you off, you're getting, you've gone over, so go ahead, conclude, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, and we would like to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss these points with Dr. Quist or whoever you think is appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Brimelson, and appreciate your comments, and with that, we'll go to the next caller, please.
Please send the next caller.
Yes.
Hi caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, hi, I'm Susan McCray, a family member and mother of Kristy Ann McCray, a seriously mentally ill individual, SMI, who died by suicide in 2010. I've been an advocate for AOT Laura's Law in Sacramento County since, I think, 2008. I serve on the Mental Health Steering Committee still, and I'm a member of these family advocates that you've been hearing from in these other comments. First of all, I would like to thank Dr. Quist, Chevron Katarri, and Jeff Twitchell and all the other staff members for their monumental effort in writing the plan for implementation of AOT. I especially appreciate the statement in the plan that says, "Family members and others supporting the individual will be actively included at each stage of the AOT process." Some family members and even proponents of AOT's Laura's Law have historically been stigmatized in the minds of some of the public and consumers as the bad guys, the ones who want to restrict their freedom and the freedom of the mentally ill loved ones, and even send them away to institutions. In my experience with family members and proponents of AOT in Sacramento County, nothing could be further from the truth. I've met many passionate, intelligent, and caring family members, some of which you've already heard from, who hold consumers' interests as well as their own. All they want is that the needs and interests of their SMI loved ones who experience lack of insight and who cannot speak for themselves are recognized, acknowledged, and heard. They are speaking for the voiceless. As a result of this historic stigma and demonization against the family and AOT proponents, their voice has often been muted, minimized, or canceled. I've even felt in this process that we've been going through, the voice of those opponents of AOT has been heard more by the Department of Behavioral Health than our voice, and I truly understand that they needed to be addressed because of their concerns, but I am concerned. But I am concerned that our voice has not been heard as clearly as I would like that. And I would like there to be a shift in that and even opportunities for us to be able to meet and to have conversations with staff in the whole implementation of this before July 1st. I would like to see family members at every level of AOT implementation for the individual. I want to see family members hired at every level of AOT implementation as well as consumers. I want family members to be part of writing pamphlets, informing people in our county about AOT, and also hired as peers, not just consumers, to be in the mobile teams, on the streets, byways, and homes of our county, contacting individuals eligible for AOT, first responders of sorts. In other words, I would like to see family members at every level of the implementation of AOT. I'd also like to see education on the MHA Steering Committee, more about AOT. I felt the vote was premature there, and I believe that that should be ongoing in the spring and in the future, that we have qualified speakers come and speak to the Mental Health Steering Committee. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, Board of Supervisors, for all, for your vote and for supporting all of us, both consumers and family members. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for your suggestions and comments.
Next caller, please. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Diana Burdick. My name is Diana Burdick, and I echo many of the comments already made. I applaud the fact that we are having this conversation and that Sacramento County is addressing the seriously mentally ill individuals in our community. As a mother of a SMI son, I would hope that we focus on those individuals with anosognosia who lack the insight to realize they need help, let alone accept the help. I strongly believe the black robe effect is a crucial tool in reaching them. If Sacramento County truly wants their AOT program to be successful, please do not be afraid to use the judicial tool available to you. This tool is not a negative and not intended to be punitive. In fact, quite the opposite. My son would have someone who is encouraging him not to be afraid of accepting help. Thank you.
Thanks, Diana.
Please send the next caller. Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. My name is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. I'm a licensed psychologist in independent practice, a community mental health advocate, and a resident of District Two. I wanted to first start with thanking Supervisor Serna's request back in December to county staff to bring this plan before the board sooner than later. Although I do serve on the county's mental health board, I'm making this statement at the intersection of being a seasoned mental health professional, a consumer of mental health services, as well as a family member of more than one individual who has experienced a severe mental illness, substance dependence, and incarceration. It's important to consider that the court order, which is meant to enforce AOT client compliance through the black robe effect, will only succeed in a system with adequate resources and sufficient providers with adequate experience. While this program has the potential to assist individuals who are currently experiencing homelessness, aggressive outreach and engagement is only possible if we prioritize a budget that allocates funds for these services that are described as a whatever-it-takes approach. Likewise, regular reporting and analysis of the data is essential. Its program effectiveness is to be maintained. According to DHS's presentation on their proposed implementation plan for AOT, the county mental health board recommended to implement AOT on October 7, 2021. However, this is untrue. The mental health board held a special meeting regarding AOT on March 10, 2021, to consider taking a position on Sacramento County adopting AOT, heard public comment, and had meaningful discussion. And the result of that meeting was that the board could not reach consensus on a recommendation and thus did not take a position. And this can be found in the meeting minutes that are published on the county's website. The Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to opt-in to AOT on May 18 of 2021, and the mental health board approved a letter with specific recommendations regarding the implementation of AOT in a letter dated October 7, 2021, which was included in this item's agenda packet. And I'm happy to see that those recommendations have been included in the program proposal you heard today, including the need for ongoing implicit bias training, the need for cross-training with system partners, and culturally-linguistically diverse staff that reflects the residents of our county. The mental health board also encouraged the use of transparency, peer involvement, confidentiality, and consistent program review by external stakeholders to ensure equity and cost-effectiveness. Relying on an internal county department to review evaluation and outcomes to evaluate this program's effectiveness does not provide independent oversight. And due to the broad and complex nature of AOT, Sack County's AOT program deserves to have its own oversight committee to ensure that it's effective and follows the recommendations set forth by the county's mental health board. In addition to having an independent oversight body over our county's AOT program aids in providing transparency and can work to build the community's trust. This practice is also in alignment with how other counties have implemented AOT, such as Los Angeles County. Tasking the mental health board with this duty does not give a program requiring forced treatment the intention, sensitivity, and oversight it requires, so I ask that you please consider directing the Department of Health Services to include such a component in their plan before approving over $3 million for their implementation of AOT. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Sacco.
And that concludes the public comments, and I'll close the public comments now.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'll bring it back to the board. We've heard quite a bit of input from interested parties, and maybe appropriate for either Siobhan, Ryan, or somebody to respond to some of what we've heard, some of it consistent with what board members asked, but other comments there as well, so.
I think the most important clarification I'd like to make is that we do fully intend to use the court process in order to make referrals to that court process. And Judge Brown has been a great partner all the way through this. You can see this in the plan as a part of our budget ask. We include the allotment for county council, who would represent the, on behalf of the behavioral health director, to file the petition. So we have made sure that we have included that as a part of our budget proposal, also have included the public defender component that would be responsible for representing those for whom the petition is filed. So I think it is unfortunate that we didn't have enough emphasis in the board letter on these components in order to help assure everybody that that's what we were intending. But that is definitely a component of what we're planning on implementing.
Ryan, I've got more members that wish to speak. But just to the point, though, there was something that was mentioned in the last commenter's points about the evaluation over time as to how that would be conducted, whether it be done internally versus externally. Any thoughts on that?
We do plan on, so we do have an internal set of resources that are responsible for taking care of the data collection and analysis and all that. We do plan on using our mental health board as a forum for us to be able to report back regarding those outcomes, as well as those outcomes are reported to DHCS as a part of the law. So we will be very transparent about that and happy to share that information with the board as well.
Thanks, Ryan. Okay, Board Member Serna and Board Member Frost.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Well, Dr. Quist, you intercepted the question that I was going to pose, which was to please address the, you know, multiple concerns that were expressed both in writing and orally here today about the perception of the lack of judicial involvement. I think that's, it's a key component of the law itself, the program itself, which makes it unique. So I know that there are, I guess, various levels of judicial involvement across the state for those counties that have opted in or that before the opt-in law was passed had originally accepted and adopted law. But I think, again, that's one of the unique attributes of the program that make it, I think, such a necessary tool to complement all the other aspects of what we can and should be doing to enhance mental health for our constituents that need help. And I don't, you know, and I, while I understand the concern and perhaps even the hesitance by some about that, I have confidence, very much so, that this can and should be implemented without any, you know, elements of being punitive in using the quote-unquote "black robe effect" too liberally without everything that needs to kind of happen before that involvement by the court. So I'm satisfied, very pleased with, I think, the amount and nature of the outreach that our staff have done in putting the plan together. It's been, I think, a very thoughtful process, and the product shows that. And I know that my colleague Supervisor Frost is in the queue to address staff and the board. But, Mr. Chair, at this point, I would like to put a motion on the table to adopt staff's recommendation.
I'll second, Desmond. If we have a motion to second, we will hold on any vote until we have a chance to hear from other members of the board, so.
I just had a quick question, and I'm not sure I understood conflict of interest waiver, which was mentioned in public comment, and I wondered if you could tell me what that is.
This is a normal part of being a county employee, is that we have to be willing to sign off on the conflict of interest information. And as a part of the board letters when creating positions, we have to indicate, we have to sort of define what the parameters are for that. So that's a necessary part of putting forward a board letter with positions in it. And if anybody wants to do a better job than I just did, feel free.
That's good. That's good. I wasn't sure what that was. Thank you, Dr. Quist, and I support it. So that's all I had. Thank you.
I want to get a clarification, Ryan or Siobhan. So we heard from a number of the folks who had written in and I think expressed, obviously, interest, support, and maybe reflected some suggestions for ongoing communication between this, the family advocates organization or group. So what is the response to that? Obviously, you've met with any number of folks or folks who may take a counter position that wish to meet as well. But I heard at least a couple of the commenters request directly that there be some established lines of communication that weren't just for the here and now, but would be ongoing, I think, with the intent to hopefully have a meaningful dialogue, but improve processes and ensure, you know, the, hopefully, a quality approach has been talked about here, so.
Thank you. Yeah, and we have, we have met with them a few times. We hosted a meeting between the advocates and the court system, including representation from Judge Brown, county council, and the public defender's office. And we will continue to make opportunities available for these conversations. The place where it seems to me that would make the most sense for those conversations is with our mental health board. And I know that there have been, I think, a couple conversations on our, on the subcommittee of the Adult System of Care Subcommittee. So I do want to continue to make sure we have conversations about this as we continue to do the implementation. And it is going to be a process to make sure that we continue to do quality improvement and design the program in a way that it's most effective for here in Sacramento County.
Yeah, I think the subcommittee is fine. Certainly, mental health board is an appropriate venue for all points of view. But I do think that, back to what you said a moment ago, that, you know, it's our staff that are going to be the providers of service, you know, working under the guise of the plan and certainly the direction of those folks who will be, you know, heading the program up. And I just think it's important that whether it's you or Siobhan, Bruce, whoever it might be, is available, you know, certainly on a need-to-base, maybe there's some, you know, ability to dialogue, because obviously there are any number of points of interest here. But when it comes to families and the consumers, obviously, those are points of view that we've heard recited many times. And I think to, and they maintain some understanding about how others see us doing the job, but also how we might improve, I think it's important. So I just wanted to point that out, Ryan. It's not just through the committee structure, through, you know, a amorphous group. It's our folks, the county staffs providing the services, right?
Yeah, thank you for that, Supervisor Natale. We will look for, to Ryan's point, look for opportunities to do stakeholder engagement beyond the mental health board and committee structure as well.
Yeah, I'm not ignoring that or going around that, but I just think, what I heard, and I think there's an ongoing interest here. So, okay, good. I appreciate that. So, all right, any other comments before I call for a vote on this? Seeing none, then I'll turn to the clerk. Then we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation, certainly noting the comments in both of board members as well as community members here today, so.
Okay, Supervisors Frost.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Desmond.
Aye.
Serna.
Aye.
Natale.
Aye.
And that's a unanimous vote.
All right. That concludes, takes us to the 11 o'clock item at 2:00. So we're going to take, is 20-minute break too short? Would you prefer 30? I don't know which you might prefer, but would 20 minutes be sufficient to get folks to some refreshment? 20 minutes? Okay. So why don't we plan on coming back at 2:20, taking up item 56, and then proceeding with the afternoon calendar? So we might be able to catch up before evening time gets here, so. All righty. But that will stand in recess until 2:20.
Okay. If you guys can make sure you mute yourselves, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Flo.